Could the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Philseth. Councilmember Fine. Councilmember Holman. Vice Mayor Niss. Councilmember Koo. Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Wolbach.
Here.
Eight present.
All right, and the first order of business is a proclamation of the council of the City of Palo Alto honoring Roy Clay. Roy's running a little late, so what we're gonna do is move on to Loretta Green, a proclamation honoring her, and then when Roy arrives, we will break from whatever we're doing and then honor Mr. Clay. So, Rob DeGuss, do you want to introduce it?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm happy to do that. Rob DeGuss, Director of Community Services, and happy to be here again this evening to introduce two individuals, and of course Roy will come a little bit later, we hope. As I shared a few weeks ago, just in terms of background, at our annual Martin Luther King Junior Event, East Palo Alto Mayor Larry Moody and our mayor, Mayor Scharf, had a conversation about the important contributions African-Americans have made to the City of Palo Alto and our community. And with that in mind, we continue to show our appreciation and our gratitude as we honor the significant contributions of Roy Clay and Loretta Green that have helped build and strengthen our community. They're individuals that have shown exceptional leadership and integrity and made a positive difference here locally and beyond. And so with that, we just feel the appreciation for having them in our community.
Thank you very much. I've asked Vice Mayor Niss to read the proclamation honoring Loretta Green.
And I requested reading it. So, Loretta, could you come up closer to the mic so that we can have you right in our sights while I read this? Right there. So, honoring Loretta Green, who has been my friend for many years and who was my neighbor for a long time as well. Whereas the City of Palo Alto is proud to honor beloved community journalist Loretta Martin Green for her significant contributions to building a community of empathy, respect, awareness, compassion, and interwoven destinies. And whereas Loretta was recognized as Woman of the Year by the California State Assembly by Assemblyman Joe Semidion for being the voice of our community throughout her work on 11 years' worth of columns in the San Jose Mercury News, which I always enjoyed reading, her columns reflected the pulse and sentiment of the public. Loretta's gracious and elegant writing style will be greatly missed, which is what Assembly Member then, Semidion, said in his proclamation. Whereas Loretta Green was also a reporter for 21 years with the Palo Alto Times and Palo Alto Times Tribune, and has been recognized as an outstanding professional journalist by the Associated Press, the Peninsula Press Club, and the Association of Newspaper Editors. And whereas Loretta is a 46-year local resident who has been active in our community for decades, she's been a member of Lynx, Inc., a senior fellow of the American Leadership Forum of Silicon Valley, served on the Board of Directors of the Museum of American Heritage, Stanford University Hospital, and a longtime member of University AME Zion Church in Palo Alto. And whereas Loretta is the recipient of numerous awards, including the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce Tall Tree Award in 1991 as Outstanding Professional Woman, the Athena Award in 1988, the Mid Peninsula YWCA's Black Woman Award, the East Palo Alto Teen Homes Positive Image Award, and the Career Action Center's Women of Vision Award. I'm not sure we've had anyone with quite that many awards recently, Loretta. And whereas Loretta, in honoring you, we are honoring our community because, as you wrote in your last column, "I want to thank you for showing me courage in the face of devastating fire, catastrophe, illness, inhumane cruelty, the guns of war, wrenching loss, and overwhelming moral conflict. Thank you for telling me the truth and trusting me with it. Thank you for believing that. When you told me who you were, that is exactly who you would see in my story." You wrote, "I have been fortunate enough to gain your trust and respect. You have taken me into your lives and shared your passions, your pain, your triumphs, your aspirations. We have smiled together and wept together. We have agreed and disagreed. All of it has been a blessing." Therefore, Mayor Greg Scharf, Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the City Council does proclaim Loretta Martin Green as a community hero and extend appreciation for your years of significant contributions, service, and leadership. What a perfect award for you. Thanks, Loretta. Thank you so much. It's an honor to receive this award. It's been a special honor to live in this city and serve this city, both as a volunteer and as a journalist. Thank you so very much.
So, don't go anywhere, because I need to come give you the proclamation presented to you, and then if we want to take any pictures.
I love Loretta.
So, it's an honor to present you with this proclamation.
My hands are sweaty.
Okay. That's fine. Don't worry.
Oh, mine.
Then we should stand.
Oh, mine.
Jim, can we take a picture? Anyone else? Thank you very much for your presentation. It was really good. And now we're to City Manager comments. And welcome back, Mr. Kane.
Thank you very much.
It's so good to see you.
Yes, I apologize. I was just doing my own personal Forrest Gump. I just started running, and I just kept going for seven weeks, and I finally stopped. Anyway, actually, you all know I had a health challenge. It should have been perfunctory, had a little complications, had to go through the repair work on all of that, but I'm really glad to be back, and I really thank the council support and our staff, and particularly thanks to Ed Chikata for, you know, I think, the great work that he did as Assistant City Manager. So, I'm gonna do the manager's comments and then just split for the rest of the night and let Ed take over. Just kidding. You're all familiar, of course, that we're in the rollout phase of the second phase of the RPP program in downtown, and the first phase for the Evergreen Park Mayfield District. As of Sunday night, our vendor reports that we sold over 1,200 resident permits for downtown and are just starting to sell resident permits for Evergreen Mayfield, with about 50 sold in the first few days of availability. This week, we'll continue to get the word out to residents, and we'll start spreading the word to businesses. Employees' permits in these districts will become available as follows. Downtown employee permits for low-income workers will be sold beginning April 2nd, and then all employees in the district will be eligible to purchase permits starting April 9th. For Evergreen Mayfield employee permits, they'll be available in three phases as follows. Employees on the waiting list for parking lots and garages in the area were eligible to purchase permits beginning last week. Secondly, low-income workers will be eligible to purchase permits beginning March 26th, and all other employees will be eligible to purchase permits beginning April 9th. And it's at that point the city will be able to fully evaluate the concerns and request for additional permits specific to medical and dental professionals in the area of that RPP district area. There were some, apparently, some serious issues with the website. People used to purchase permits the first couple of days. We think most of those issues have been resolved. There's still some fine tuning underway. I ask the council, if you hear otherwise, to pass those comments on to us. Our consultant will be stationed at the customer service counter on the first floor here in City Hall during business hours to help people who are having difficulty, if they're having it, purchasing permits online, and will bring up backup support as needed. They've also committed to allocate the resources necessary to promptly return email and voicemails to their customer service phone number and email box. During the same period, contractors will be busy installing signs out in the field, and staff has sent a survey to Southgate residents regarding establishment of an RPP program in their neighborhood. Staff will also be hosting a business open house for employees in the Evergreen Park Mayfield District on March 22nd, and one for employees in the downtown district on March 29th. We know there's a lot going on. We ask councilmembers, again, to help steer constituents to our website and diffuse some of the anxieties out there. Everything will be okay. Wanted to share an update on significant structure fires we had in the past 10 days. Really bizarre situation. We've had four structure fires in the past 10 days, which is about what we have in an entire year typically. First of all, on March 10th, on Friday, in Town and Country Village, a two-alarm structure fire occurred at Jamba Juice, and the fire burned a rear storage area, didn't extend other businesses, and all businesses were able to continue operating by Saturday morning. Secondly, on Saturday, March 11th, at the Stanford Medical School Building, a three-alarm structure fire. An hazardous materials incident occurred in the research lab attached to the hospital. A total of 61 firefighters from fire departments in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties responded to the incidents. This is the most significant incident on Stanford in the last 44 years. Third, on Saturday, March 18th, a one-alarm structure fire burned a bedroom and attic of a two-story home in midtown on Toy Unplaced. The family was displaced because of the fire. And then yesterday, on March 19th, a two-alarm structure fire burned an attic area and roof of a single home on Seal Avenue in Old Palo Alto Neighborhood, and the family was displaced. All of these incidents, they're all unrelated, under investigation. Fortunately, no injuries to citizens or firefighters. But again, really, for the longest period of time, we've had less than 10 structure fires in the course of a year. City of Palo Alto staff and Cubberly tenants will be hosting the third annual Cubberly Community Day this Saturday, March 25th. The day will begin at 9:00 a.m. with Canopy and Kiwanis leading volunteers in tree planting and mulching projects around the front of the campus. At 11:00 a.m., there will be performances and demonstrations on the stage in the outdoor Cubberly amphitheater. Please come and enjoy the vibrant community at Cubberly and see all the opportunities and activities available to the public. It's always a great way to show support for the artists and other folks who make Cubberly their home. Volunteer activities will run from 9:00 a.m. to noon, with demonstrations, food activities running from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. March 31st marks, excuse me, March 31st marks the deadline for businesses currently enrolled in the city's business registry to renew their registration. New businesses are also required to register with the city through the online tool. To make the process as simple as possible, the city has developed an easy-to-use website for online registration at HTTPS. It's a secure site. Thousands of businesses were notified over the past two weeks about the deadline, including information about how to register online. The registry flat fee covers only the administrative expenses of the program and is not a revenue-generating tool of any sort for the city. Most businesses should have the necessary data readily available and be able to fill out the questionnaire and pay the fee online in a few minutes. We'll certainly give the council a follow-up report on the reregistration process on this year's registry. From the city clerk, just another reminder that the city is looking for engaged community members to serve on the Human Relations Commission, the Library Advisory Commission, the Public Art Commission, and the Utilities Advisory Commission. Applications are available on the clerk's webpage at cityofpaloalto.org/clerk, and the application deadline is April 4th at 4:30 p.m. And then finally, tomorrow night, March 21st, celebrated author Shaka Sanghor, author of Writing My Wrongs: Life, Death, and Redemption in an American Prison, will be speaking at Cubberly Theater at 7:00 p.m. This is part of the annual Silicon Valley Reads Program and is sponsored by the Friends of the Palo Alto Library. This year's theme is justice for all. You can find more information on this library's webpage. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to oral communications, and we have C. Ready to be followed by Mark Peterson Perez, and you each have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council. I'd like to thank Mayor Greg Scharf, Lydia Koo, Greg Tanaka, and Adrian Fine to have attended the College Terrace Annual Meeting last Saturday. We got to know our mayor's views a lot more, and I appreciate the time they've spent with us. The second item is near and dear to all of us. This is the time, this is the week, that our seniors in accomplished Palo Alto high schools get college notifications. So, we've all been parents. Some disappointments, some congratulations, but nothing matters more than graduating. I can assure the children, the families, that they're going to do fine. They're gonna do much better than they might be thinking, but it's time to reflect and congratulate them, and also remember that if you are absent for more than six times in a class, you could get an F, and you have to be here for summer. So, I think we have to manage our children's, whatever, glory or disappointment, so please allow that. And third thing, great news. You know, there's a lot of talk about, you know, President Trump doing this, this and that, and that. So, I'm happy and informed that one of my customers, managers that I supported at Boeing, has been picked to be the number-one Pentagon official. His name is Pat Shanahan, and he is an outstanding person that has the greatest way of troubleshooting programs, problems, people, and technical issues. He was the one that recovered the 787 program. Pat was the, has been the Senior Vice President of Supply Chain at Boeing, and he is going to work on general matters. I assure you that he'll do the best for the country. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark Peterson Perez to be followed by Ryan Repke.
Yo soy de Nicaragua. I'm gonna be returning to Nicaragua, so I probably won't be back for six or seven months, but I've enjoyed coming here and standing before you as a stand-up comic, because I know that a lot of what I have said over the years, everyone treats it as a joke. Now, I have been studying the First Amendment, or First Amendment law now, for nearly 30 years, and my mentor is Hayden Covington, Senior Chief Legal Counsel for the Watchtower Bible and Track Society. That individual won more First Amendment Supreme Court decisions than any other person in history. So, a lot of our First Amendment rights that we have today and enjoy is the direct results of Jehovah's Witnesses. Now, Liz, I take issue with you on the First Amendment issue, and I'll explain to you why. This chamber is a quasi courtroom, okay? There are decorum which we follow, and quite naturally. But when you say no booing, hissing, clapping, et cetera, et cetera, that is simply not true, okay? We have a First Amendment right in which, in order to do so, because what I have found over the years, ladies and gentlemen, is that you clap in happy talk, but when there is an issue involving police issues, and you're criticizing the police chief or any other racist activity in this city, you stand up and you say, "No, you shouldn't do that." That is totally false, and it's a disservice, Liz, to the First Amendment. So, please make a note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Repke to be followed by Dan Garber.
Hi, how you doing? I believe I've addressed some of you guys before.
You can lift up the mic.
Hello? Hi, how you doing? So, I'm the founder and CEO of Social Bicycles, and we've been talking with your transportation team for almost a year, working on a bike share project for Palo Alto. I just wanted to come and say again that we hope that the measure will be reintroduced to council for vote. We have an established solution. We've been in the market for eight years, perfecting the technology, and we're really excited about the idea of bringing it here to this city. You know, we, our proposal will ensure a high quality of equipment that maintains service levels and is here for the long term. And, you know, the final proposal that we submitted has us assuming all the operating costs. So, after the initial capital investment, you know, we will assume all the operating costs and have incentives to actually grow and expand the program. You know, there's, the new players that are entering the space do not have any sort of track record or experience, and we've seen in other cities a product actually falling apart on the street, and there's a lot of photos and documentation of that. And so, for having a long-term system here that meets the transportation goals and addresses the transportation challenges in the city, you know, we hope that we have a chance to partner and work with your transportation department to bring a large-scale bike share system to this city. You know, we've operated in 35 locations across the U.S., Canada, Europe, Australia, including a 1,000-bike system in Portland, Oregon. So, we're bringing all that experience and that history of working with cities to achieve these transportation goals. So, if you have any questions over the next few weeks as you think about this item, I'd be happy to talk to you, and, you know, the city staff have my contact. I'd love the chance to speak to you guys.
Thank you very much. Dan Garber to be followed by Monte Frost.
I'm Dan Garber. I'm a resident, and I own the business at 81 Encina, which is a small street behind Town and Country Shopping Center. The difference between us and the homeless is very slight, a slight bump in our societal construct or a slight change in our chemical construct of our own persons. We would all be on the street as many of our fellow citizens are. As a result, we work very closely with the Opportunity Center, which is right down the street from us, and deal with many of its occupants. My business has a driveway and a carport, which is often used as, or seen as, an opportunity for the homeless to use overnight. We've worked, as a result, with Philip Daw at the Opportunity Center closely over the number of years to resolve a variety of these issues. The police have been called a number of times, and I will point out that they have been uniformly professional, humane, and very supportive of us, as well as very respectful of those that we've had to deal with there. However, my business is now 30 years old this year. It was started by a woman, my wife, and we now have two female partners, and it has been a majority-female business for that 30 years ever since. There are more women than there are men there. Not that that is a particular difference, whether it's men or women. We have been dealing with some derelict trucks on our street, one that was parked in front of our business as of last week, and has now been moved several spaces away from our business. However, it has a resident in it that has now been banned from the Opportunity Center and was jailed, apparently, for several days as a result of an altercation there. But this is a particular threat to my employees and my clients, and is an issue that could potentially be resolved by simply having the police deal with those trucks the way that they posted parking would require them to be removed at the end of the day. However, as we've understood in two discussions with the police, the reason that they do not tow them is because the likelihood of recovering the cost of that is extremely low to nil. No one would ever come and claim those cars, then the city would have to bear the cost of the towing, as well as the storage of them. However, that does not negate the impact that it has on both my employees, which are there many times after dark and often at 6:00 a.m. in order to beat traffic. I would like to ask the city's help in dealing with these two trucks and any further trucks to be able to get them off our street, to get them towed, and get rid of this particular problem that we're having. Any help that you could offer in encouraging the police to act on this would be very helpful to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I would ask the city manager if you could look into it. Next up, we have Monte Frost.
Members of the council, I'm Monte Frost. I'm a resident, and I'm here to support Dan Garber, the previous speaker. I and my wife own two buildings on Encina Avenue, and we are impacted by the trucks that are there. I thank you for your request to deal with them. I just want to point out that Dan's and his architecture firm, with many women in it, do inhabit one of the buildings that we own. The other is used by the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, and Palo Alto Medical Foundation uses it for accommodation of medical record storage, for which there are many women there that are attending to those records, and they also use it for yoga, partly for young people to come and get yoga as a community service, as given by the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. And Dan sent a email in with some pictures of these trucks, and I'll tell you, they're scary-looking, they're derelict trucks, they're just parked there, and they don't really exude safety. You know, I wouldn't want my wife to walk past a derelict truck parked there at dusk, and I think it's a safety issue as far as I'm concerned. I need to provide a safe space for my tenants. So, there is signage there which prevents, prohibits overnight parking, and you heard Dan's explanation of why the police aren't towing, and because it might be expensive to do that. So, I just want to support him and the Palo Alto Medical Foundation in saying that I would urge you to do whatever you can to help the police get rid of the trucks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that brings us to the consent calendar. We have one speaker on the consent calendar, Herb Borack. Oh, the minutes, I forgot the minutes. I need a motion on the minutes.
Moved.
Okay, moved and seconded, moved by Councilmember Philseth, seconded by Councilmember Fine. If we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. Now, we'll come to the consent calendar. Herb Borack, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. This is on 429 University Avenue. I'd like to repeat what I said on your meeting on February 6th, that there's substantial evidence provided that this project has an unmitigated, potentially significant, impact in that it's using floor area from 340 University Avenue, which is a demolished building, when it can only use floor area from rehabilitated buildings, and demolition is not included in the term rehabilitation. And for that reason, I believe, need an environmental impact report. I had previously provided you evidence from the executive branch in California.
in that it's using floor area from 340 University Avenue, which is a demolished building, when it can only use floor area from rehabilitated buildings, and demolition is not included in the term rehabilitation. And for that reason, I believe, need an environmental impact report. I had previously provided you evidence from the executive branch in California and Oregon to demonstrate that rehabilitation and demolition are different terms. There's additional evidence from the judicial branch in Connecticut saying the same thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, when we vote, I'll be voting against item number 13, 429 University, as I did before.
All right.
Comments on the consent calendar now, or after we vote?
Sure. I think we can take the comments now, if you're how you're voting. Wait, just wait one second. Councilmember Koo, did you?
I didn't hear the motion.
There was no motion. Councilmember Holman was just basically stating that we should record her as a no vote on 429 University.
Oh, I see.
Do you also wish to be recorded as a no vote, or not?
Yes, I'm a no vote, too.
Okay. Seeing no other... Oh, Councilmember Niss.
And on the same item, I am going to recuse myself, because I wasn't here and have not had sufficient time to review the record from that night.
Okay.
Sorry. We're going to vote no on that item as well.
Councilmember DuBois is also going to record a no vote on that. If we could now vote on the board with the recorded no votes.
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, I thought we made a motion. You didn't...
We did.
Yeah, it was made by... Oh, that was the minutes. You're right. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar. Moved by Councilmember Niss, seconded by Councilmember Fine. Let's vote on the board. Councilmember Koo, are you voting? There we go. And that passes unanimously with the recorded no votes.
Yes, right, Clay.
And one abstention. Yes, he has. So, Mr. Clay, welcome. Thank you so much for coming. So right now, we will proceed to the recognition of Roy Clay. If you could come up to the podium, Mr. Clay, and... Rob, do you have any further comments you'd like to make? No? All right. And I've asked Councilmember Fine to read the proclamation.
Mr. Clay, we haven't met before, but I'm truly honored to read your proclamation, just from doing a little bit of research. So this is honoring Roy Clay. Whereas Palo Alto is honored to recognize long-term Palo Alto resident Roy Clay as a technology pioneer who made significant professional contributions to the rise of the computer and software industries in the community we now know as Silicon Valley. And whereas Roy Clay, who grew up in Missouri and arrived in Palo Alto in 1962, became the first African-American hired locally in high-tech, and went on to establish the software development facility at Hewlett-Packard, managed the company's emerging computing division, and aided in HP's emergence as a computer company. And whereas Roy Clay was a guiding hand behind a venture capital firm, Technologies Investment, and emerging companies like Tandem, Compaq, and Intel. And whereas, because of the impact of his work, Roy Clay became known as the godfather of Silicon Valley, and in 2003 was inducted into the Silicon Valley Engineering Council Hall of Fame alongside Bill Hewlett, Dave Packard, Robert Neuss, and Gordon Moore. And whereas Roy Clay also founded the electrical safety test equipment company Rod L. Electronics in 1977, served as president of San Francisco's Olympic Club, home of U.S. amateur tournaments, and served over 35 years in community organizations like Job Train and the Girls Club of the Mid Peninsula to improve the quality of life of our communities. And whereas Roy Clay became the first person of color to serve on the Palo Alto City Council from 1973 to 1979, and he was Palo Alto's first African-American vice mayor in 1976 and 1977. Now, therefore, the Honorable Gregory Scharf, mayor of the city of Palo Alto, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize Roy Clay as a community hero, and extend appreciation for his years of valuable contributions and service. Congratulations, sir.
I spent many nights in this building, many of which were enjoyable, and I'm happy to come back after many years, and to see Palo Alto become the city it is. I just something, I just want to say, thank you kindly for recognizing me tonight, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Does staff have a presentation?
Very quick comment, as I understand, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name's David Ramberg, Assistant Director of the Administrative Services Department, and the lead department on the Tefra hearing. Want to provide one correction for the record to the staff report on page 2 of the staff report. This is Staff Report 7801. Page 2, the second paragraph under discussion references a publishing of a public notice, and there's no date in there. So the correct date for the publishing of the public notice was March 3, 2017, and it occurred in the Palo Alto Weekly. So I wanted to make that for the record. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And now we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers? Seeing no speakers, we'll then close the public hearing, and we come back to council for motions, comments, whatever you want to do. I see no lights. It would be nice if someone moved the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Moved by Councilmember Phil Seth, staff recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Walbach. If we could vote on the board? And that passes on an 8-0 vote, with Councilmember Niss not currently present. So now we move on to item 16, which is the comp plan discussion, and we have a staff Yep, as soon as you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Scharf and council members. I'm Hillary Gittelman, the planning director. I'm joined by Elaine Costello, our project manager, on this project, and we will shortly be joined by Joanna Jensen from our consultant placework. She's on the road. So tonight, we're here to talk about the comprehensive plan update, which we have done, as you know, many times. And specifically this evening, we are asking that the council conduct a public hearing and receive comments on the supplement to the draft DIR. We are also hoping the council will assist us in identifying a preferred scenario for description in the final EIR. We've provided some recommendations on that, based on your direction to staff on January 30th and earlier. No final decision on anything is really going to be made tonight. This is for the purpose of gathering comments and direction on what should be in the final EIR, not a final decision on what should be in the comp plan. We are also hoping this evening that we can clarify and receive additional direction from the council on the replacement of programs in the comprehensive plan update. Just in terms of some background, you all know that this process to update the comp plan started back in 2008. We've been going through a long series of twists and turns on the road. We're now at the point in the process where the council is reviewing and refining the work products of the Citizens Advisory Commission Committee, and we are concurrently undertaking the SEQA review process. And it's really that SEQA review process that we're focusing on this evening, when we talk about the supplement to the draft DIR and the preferred alternative. Just briefly, the purpose of the EIR is to analyze potential impacts under the comprehensive ...in the final EIR. We will be explaining in that document how the comp plan that's adopted by the council falls within the range of all of the scenarios presented. It's important to understand that the EIR and the preferred scenario are descriptive of the comprehensive plan update and its impacts, they're not determinative. In other words, what you put in the final EIR isn't an action, that's an approval action. You actually will be taking a separate action to approve the comprehensive plan update, and that will be the determinant of what's in the comp plan for the next generation here in Palo Alto. So the six planning scenarios that have been analyzed, the first four in the draft EIR, and the last two in the supplement to the draft EIR, are range in intensity, and I'm just going to skip to that slide that shows all six of them together. You'll see Scenario 1 is intended to represent business as usual, so that's what we project will happen in terms of growth here in Palo Alto. If nothing has changed about the current comp plan, and we just continue on the road we've been on. And then all of the various scenarios 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 test different ideas about slowing growth, adding housing, slowing job growth, focusing on sustainability and performance metrics, and things like that. And so we can come back to this slide later, if you need a refresher on the assumptions and the characteristics of these scenarios. So the supplement to the draft DIR that we wanted to hear comments on this evening focus on the last two scenarios, 5 and 6, that were added by the council. We've also updated some of the information in the draft DIR from February 2016, and we are right now in a public review period where we're accepting comments on both of the documents. So the original draft DIR from February 2016, and the supplement to the draft that we published this February, comments are due to the city by the close of business on March 31st. And of course, this evening's public hearing would be a good time for people to comment. We also have a hearing scheduled at the Planning and Transportation Commission next Wednesday, the 29th. So just at a high level, the supplement to the draft DIR concludes that Scenarios 5 and 6 would not result in any new significant impacts that weren't already identified in association with Scenarios 1 to 4. Many mitigation measures would be required with any of the scenarios, and we've worked on the wording of some of those mitigation measures to provide the council with a little more flexibility when you're adopting the comp plan policy language itself, but maintaining the effectiveness of those measures. The conclusions regarding impacts and mitigation measures for greenhouse gas emissions and the population and housing sections have been adjusted for the first four scenarios as well, and that's explained in the document. We've also produced a revised draft of the fiscal study. If you recall, the draft fiscal study was reviewed by the Finance Committee the last time around, and then the full council had an opportunity to review it. We have updated the study to include responses to the questions that the Finance Committee raised, and to include the additional scenarios. Bottom line is, all of the six scenarios would have a tiny positive impact in terms of revenues and impact on the general fund. I think it's probably better to say the conclusion is they would not have a negative impact on the general fund, because the positive increase is so slight. Also, the conclusion, if you remember last time around, we were really focusing on trying to quantify the impacts and benefits of residents versus employees, and the conclusion was that the expected fiscal benefit of a new resident, again, is slightly greater than the expected benefit from a new employee. And I think our consultants will be here this evening to answer questions, if there are any, on the fiscal study. So what we're looking for tonight, in terms of the public hearing on the EIR portion of the evening, any questions or comments from the public, or from the council, on the methodology or conclusions of the analysis, anything about the mitigation measures we proposed, anything about the significant unavoidable impacts that will require a statement of overriding considerations when the council adopts the plan, and those are specifically related to air quality and traffic, and then any other topics or issues within the scope of the EIR would be welcome this evening. So when we get through the public hearing process, again, we're hoping that the council will help us shape the preferred scenario as it's described in the final EIR. Essentially, the point of identifying a preferred scenario is so that we can demonstrate how the comp plan that's ultimately adopted falls within the range of scenarios that have been analyzed in the EIR. What we've done in your staff report is try to tease out from the council's direction on January 30th, and in previous meetings, what the council's direction has been, and suggested to you what we think the preferred scenario might look like. So, and the main characteristics that we're looking at are the number of housing units, and therefore, population, the number of square footage, the amount of square footage, non-residential square footage, the amount of jobs, and then other characteristics like transportation investments and zoning changes. So looking at housing, if you recall, on January 30th, the council asked us in the comp plan to eliminate the housing sites on San Antonio, which is not really transit-accessible, or not really well-served by transit, and instead increase densities in downtown and near Cal Ave. You asked us to look at adding housing sites in the Stanford Shopping Center, as long as we preserve parking, in the Stanford Research Park and near the Medical Center. You asked us to also pursue policies that convert some non-retail commercial, in other words, office space, or development potential to residential development potential, and you asked us to bring forward policies that encourage a mix of housing types, including policies that support small units. If you kind of add all these policy directions up and compare them to the assumptions in the various EIR scenarios, our feeling is that the total would fall between Scenarios 4 and Scenarios 6, so kind of on the high end. Those policies are very supportive of housing, and we think they would fall on the high end of the range between Scenarios 4 and Scenarios 6. Moving on to non-residential square footage, we had a discussion with the council about the growth cap that's in the current comp plan, Policy L8, and got your direction about that. Basically, the council directed us to update that cap and include 1.7 million square feet, which is what's remaining under the original cap, with some updates and changes to focus on office R&amp;D. If we do that, our opinion is that what the council has articulated, and the way it would play out in one of the EIR scenarios, is to really be like Scenario 2, which assumes 3 million square feet of non-residential space. Of course, 1.3 million of that has already been approved at the Medical Center. Moving on to jobs, again, the council had a discussion about the office annual limit, which is sort of the one policy lever we think of that can really contribute to the amount of non-residential development that happens in Palo Alto over the next 15 years. And I should say that job growth is one of the hardest things to project, because, and you know this, we don't always see a proportional relationship between new development and new jobs, like we do on the housing side. It tends to be a pretty proportional relationship. On the job side, because with economic cycles, the employment densities sort of wax and wane, and so you can have a lot of job growth, even if you don't add a lot of square footage, and it becomes a little bit of an art to try and project what job growth is going to look like. But the office annual limit is one of those things that the council has directed us to pursue as an ordinance, and that, we know, does have an impact on the amount of development that happens, and therefore, the amount of jobs. Just thinking about it, big picture, our thought was that the... Just thinking about it, big picture, our thought was that the preferred scenario therefore would fall between the job numbers for the Scenario 2 and Scenario 3. These are kind of middle-of-the-road scenarios in the EIR. And then the staff report talks about some of the transportation investments that we think would be appropriate in the preferred scenario. This is based on the list that's in the transportation element that the council didn't quite have time to get to. The last time, we talked about it on January 30th, and we're bringing that back to you on May 1st. Obviously, the transportation element is full of policies about reducing reliance on single-occupant vehicle and the like, and we know all of that will be in the preferred scenario, but this is specifically a list of investments or capital improvements related to transportation that we want to try and refine with you this evening, if possible, and if not this evening, then on May 1st. Similarly, there are a number of other zoning changes and policies related to sustainability. We would like to confirm with you whether these reflect your understanding of the direction we're going in and whether we can articulate them as part of the preferred scenario. So this is really a three- or four-part meeting. The last part of the staff report deals with this question about the placement of programs in the comprehensive plan itself, and we provided some information in a memo to the council, just summarizing where we are with implementation programs in the current comp plan. There are 266 programs. This is the second column there, and this does not include the housing element. We have completed, since the plan was adopted in 1998, about 40 of them, and then the new comprehensive plan update that the CAC is working on, at this point, includes 368 programs, again, not counting what's in the housing element. And this figure is updated from the number that was in your staff report because the CAC has a subcommittee that's already been working with staff to try and consolidate programs, and the council made some recommendations about programs that could be eliminated when we met with you in January. So the number is trending downward from the 400-something that was in your staff report is now at 368. So there are two options for the council presented in the staff report. The first option would implement your direction on January 30th and put the programs in an implementation plan at the back of the comp plan, and we outlined some ways that we would recommend doing that in the staff report in the recommendation section. The second option is to reverse course and continue with the formatting that we've been using, that the current comp plan has, where the implementation programs are both in the implementation plan at the back of the book, but also interspersed without the, throughout the elements. So just briefly on next steps, this evening, again, we're hearing, we're holding a public hearing on the supplement to the draft EIR, and we'll have another hearing with the Planning Commission next week on the 29th, and then the comment period will close at the end of the day on March 31st. On May 1st, we're coming back to the council to finish your work on your initial review of land use and transportation. If you remember, we kind of ran out of time at the end of the last meeting, so we'll be back on May 1st with that. Then on May 15th, our plan is to bring to you the last three elements that the CAC completed, which is natural environment, safety, and business and economics. We're hoping that that period, mid-May, will conclude the CAC's work, and you will be able to offer your thanks and our acknowledgement of their work, your meeting of June 5th, and then June 12th, you'll review the last pieces before your break, and we hope at that point you will refer the document to the Planning and Transportation Commission for their review over the summer. So just put our recommendations here on another slide, and Elaine and I are happy to answer any questions at this point about what we're looking for this evening, and of course, we look forward to the council's comments and those of the public.
Thank you very much. So we have a bunch of different items that this can be broken up into, but I thought before we go to the public and before we take these individually, I know a lot of council members like to ask questions and get stuff off their chest, so I think we'd have a three-minute round, which we'll time over here. Please try not to go over your three minutes. I won't let anyone go over their three minutes. And, you know, ask questions or make comments or whatever you feel you need to do. And I was going to actually start, I don't mind starting at one of the other ends and moving forward, if that's all right? Councilmember Holman, would you like to go first?
That's fine. Thank you. So, a couple of things. Scenario 6, we had, before you start the timer, so, okay, can we start now? Scenario 6, we had voted that that would have 10% less square footage of commercial, but yet, and this has been brought up before, but yet the number of jobs are the same. And so, could you explain that?
So I would have to go back in my notes to recreate exactly how we got to these scenarios, but I believe it was with very specific direction and a very specific motion from the City Council that directed us to include the square footage of 2.4 million square feet in both Scenarios 5 and 6, and at that point did not modify the job number downward. Now, we as professionals still think that that job number would be difficult to rationalize, given the amount of office and other space that already exists in Palo Alto and this phenomenon that I mentioned, that job growth is not just tied to new development space, it also has to do with how many workers are going into existing space. So I know this has come up a number of times, but that's where we, these are the scenarios we've analyzed.
So maybe some of my colleagues can recall, but we did reduce the floor area ratio, the square footage of office in Scenario 6, so.
And that's reflected here in this number. 2.4 is the number that was directed by council.
But it's the same as Scenario 5.
They were both directed to have the same square footage. That reflects the council's direction.
I have different memory. I could be wrong, but I have different memory of that. And some of the things we have here, so we recently, the majority council approved an ADU ordinance that has not been analyzed in the EIR, and it essentially is like a zoning change. Some people would say it basically changes much of Palo Alto to R2 and allows a lot more housing density. So should that be included in analysis in the DEIR?
That's a really good question. We'll, of course, provide a complete response in the final EIR, but the scenarios did assume some evolution of the city's policies on ADU, because if you recall, the council had a colleague's memo that had been referred to the PTC. So when we were crafting scenarios, at least some of the scenarios assumed a policy to encourage additional ADUs, so I think we're covered there.
It just, I think, there could be a case made also that goes a lot further than what we probably anticipated happening, because there's no minimum lot size now, so. A couple of areas, a couple of three areas in the DEIR, and we're not, I guess we're talking about anything.
Councilmember Fine?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report and all its hard work. We're closing in on some choices here. Three quick questions. One, a number of cities nearby us have recently adopted amendments or new general plans, and I'm wondering if you can give us, I should have asked you this last week, my apologies, but if you could give us some ballpark figures on what some of our nearby colleague cities have done in terms of new housing numbers, new jobs targets in their comp plans.
I'm afraid I just can't do that off the top of my head, but we'd be happy to get back to the council on that and include that in the final EIR as a comparative.
That would be helpful if we can see ourselves in the next meeting in comparison to some of those cities. Two, I'm just looking at some of the provisions along Stanford Research Park and the Shopping Center, providing, potentially providing housing sites along El Camino and towards our Caltrain stations. I'm wondering, are those additive to the Research Park's current commercial areas, or would they subtract from it?
I think the suggestion was that it would be additive, so in addition to the non-residential development potential in the Research Park, there would be an encouragement or provision of residential uses in that area.
Okay, thank you. And last question, when looking at the different scenarios, I really appreciated all the different EIR kind of measures on them. One that stood out to me is on Scenario 6, it has the lowest SOV trips, so kind of the highest percentage of folks not using, not driving alone. And I'm wondering if you can kind of figure out or explain to us why that is, what's helping to move folks away from cars in that scenario.
Thank you for that question. It's a good observation. I think all of the alternatives, you know, the differences between the alternatives are pretty slight, but as you observe, that alternative has a lower SOV rate. You know, I will have to ask the transportation professionals who develop the travel demand model exactly which of all the levers they pull and push resulted in that outcome, but we can get back to you and certainly respond to that in the final EIR.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Quick question. So on Slide 9, you have the expected fiscal benefit of a new resident is greater than the benefit of a new employee in the city. Then I'm looking at packet page 446, and it shows the marginal cost burden on the general fund, and for per resident, it's 382, and per employee is 258. Are you, is it a typo on the slide or typo in the book here?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Tanaka, I had trouble hearing your question.
Sorry. Can you hear me? Okay. So on Slide 9 of your presentation, on the third, on the fourth bullet, it says the expected fiscal benefit of a new resident is greater than the benefit of a new employee in the city. Then if you look at packet page 446, it shows the numbers, and they, they're different. I mean, they, it shows that it actually costs more per resident than per employee.
Yeah, I think on this packet page 446, it's showing the cost burden to the city, so the residents cost slightly more.
So it costs the city more per resident than it does per employee?
Correct, correct.
But how come on the slide 9, you say just opposite?
Aren't you building the tax contribution from the different? I would say, in our situation, actually, given the tax structure and the high property values in Palo Alto, the tax benefit that you get, we get from a resident, you know, pushes that cost burden actually into a little bit ahead on the employee side. I would say in general, that's a departure from what the standard practice usually is in most jurisdictions, and that very much due to both the situation with being able to collect property tax revenues from commercial in California and the high property values in Palo Alto for residential property.
And when we get to the public hearing, our consultant who did the fiscal study is here and can answer further questions.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yeah, thank you. So when we do the final EIR, there's some, there's some stuff going on at Stanford sort of during the same timeframe, both the, you know, the existing sort of 2000 graduate student expansion and then the GOP expansion. So how, what's the interaction between that and the EIR? Is the EIR going to consider that as well, or is, how's that going to work?
Well, I'm going to start the response, and then I'll let Joanna Jensen, who's joined us, maybe polish up, but there are really two responses to that. First, it's hard to, EIRs take a long time to prepare, and so the rule basically is that when you begin, when you issue your notice of preparation and start the process, you're required to use the information that is known at that time about the future, and we did that. Then, as you say, you know, things have transpired since then, the additional houses, additional housing units at Escondido Village, and now the new GUP proposal, and we do talk about cumulative impacts in this EIR in a non-quantified way. So we've tried to draw a broad enough net that we have some coverage for this additional development. Joanna, did you want to add anything?
I think that's accurate, and we'll be able to provide more specific quantification in the final EIR about what is included in the cumulative impact analysis for the Stanford area.
This is, I mean, the Stanford expansion, I mean, it's like 4 million square feet or something like that. It's a lot. I mean, it's as, it's as big as another downtown in Palo Alto, so I think, you know, it's, it's an outlier. It's a fairly material case, so I would hope that, I mean, if we don't factor it in, the odds of us, you know, being off and skewed are pretty high. Understand the issue.
Councilmember Ness, Vice Mayor Ness, sorry. Yes.
So earlier today, Ms. Gittleman, we had a conversation about numbers, and because I thought if we looked at the past briefly, that might help us predict the future. My recollection is in 1970, we had around 55,000 people, as we did in 2000, but by 2012, we had about 65,000 people. So we've had one period where we've jumped ahead almost 10,000 people, so my question back to you was, how many houses were built during that time that accommodated an extra 10,000 people? Roughly.
Thank you.
I know that it doesn't quite go in 10-year increments.
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to answer with specificity, but we do have a range of assumptions here, and the first scenario, Scenario 1 and 2, really reflect our long-term average in terms of producing housing units. And there have been some periods in Palo Alto where we've produced housing units at a faster rate. So the period from 1998 to 2006, we produced about over 200 units per year. So 214 was the number, but in overall, in this period that we're, that we look back on, it was about 180 permits or units per year. And again, the scenarios reflect that, although some of the higher scenarios go beyond our historic average by quite a bit.
My point being that even in that period of time, and I know that in 2000, 2008 or 9, somewhere in that period of time, it was perceived that we built a great deal of housing in Palo Alto, and yet it doesn't sound as though it ever averaged over about 200 houses a year. Is that right? So as we look at this tonight, and I know there's a lot of hope about more housing, and I'm delighted we've added the ADUs, but I think that unless things change dramatically, and we'll probably discuss that during the evening, it's difficult to find the land, the permits, and so forth to go over that 200, I think you said maybe one year, there was actually 241 homes built, but that was probably an unusual year. I've run out of my time. Thanks.
Councilmember Walbach?
So David, if you could prep those slides I sent you. So let me just say, in order to create a readable document and to ensure, ensure, sorry, some options for the future, I suggested in January that we do with the comp plan what we decided to do with the SCAP, the Sustainability Climate Action Plan, namely to maintain the programs in the implementation plan, which would be, and I wasn't, I'll take credit for not being very clear about this in January, which we could then update every five years as appropriate. That's what we thought was a good idea with the SCAP. I thought, why don't we do it with the comp plan, too? However, given a number of excellent conversations with members of the CAC and the general public, I have come to view the best step for this plan is to keep the programs in the comp plan main body, directly following the policies with which they're associated. This was not because of the inaccurate op-ed by a colleague nor misrepresentations by a past mayor who badgered CAC members. My mind has been changed because of reasoned civil discourse. We've had a vibrant set of discussions over the last couple of months about what programs do and should do in the comp plan, where they should be placed, and how future councils can learn, can lean upon today's guidance while retaining the capacity to adapt to changes in technology, economy, climate, and the community in the future. Now, the state of California has a guidebook on how to write a general or a comprehensive plan. The idea of having us review and update the programs every five years is clearly supported by state guidelines, and in fact, they go further, calling for annual program review and for a five-year review and revision of the entire comp plan. So if you look at page, if you were to look at page 14 of the State of California Office of Planning Research General Plan Guidelines from 2003, it says, "The general plan should be reviewed regularly regardless of its horizon and revised as new information becomes available and as community needs and values change." If we could go to Slide 2, California OPR says that we should review If we could go to slide two, California OPR says that we should review and amend programs annually, which is five times more often than I think we need to, but that's the state guidelines. That's on page 46. And also, if you go to slide three, the state says that we should actually review and revise the entire comp plan every five years. So again, this is not what I'm recommending. It's not what I recommended in January. Again, given the conversations we've had, I'm fine with leaving the programs in the main body of the comprehensive plan. So when it comes time for making motions, I'd be happy to make a motion to keep the programs prominently in the main comp plan text. But I think it's important for us all to remember, you know, whichever programs we personally have our hearts set on, and I like a lot of them, to remember that according to state guidelines, this is meant to be a living document. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo?
Having worked on the comp plan, I would find it hard-pressed to find any members of the community who wants to revisit it every five years. But, so my question is mainly, how much interaction and communication have you had with the schools in terms of kind of looking at all these numbers that are coming up with the growth rate?
Let me start that, and then City Manager Jim Keane had a recent communication with the school district as well. Our consultant team and staff coordinated with the district when we were preparing the analysis in the EIR, and in fact, the student generation rates that we used reflected update, reflect updated information from the district. So we did coordinate with them. I know we've gotten some comments from members of the school board today. We're happy to respond to. I think there are responses, and we can respond in more detail later this evening if you have specific questions about those remarks.
Thank you. If I could just add to that, so I got some word from staff and others that actually at the Barron Park, neighborhood meeting this weekend, this, this question came up. And so I called the superintendent just to check in with him today, and he did mention that they were not going to be able to be here at the meeting. He did really express a desire to be sure that there was an opportunity for their staff to meet with us prior to the council really taking particular action, so that they had a better understanding of the implications. We did share with them, I did share with them the fact that even though the council has the hearing tonight, our current schedule has us taking comments through March 31st. And so that he was heartened to know that they, they had that opportunity. So I would expect we will get some, we'll meet with them in this next 10 days, and I think they'll have some opportunities to, at some of their written comments. That being said, Hillary later on may ultimately go in more detail about the, even the subsequent interface coming back to the council on the land use and transportation elements in, in May, where I think, you know, in addition to what you're going to deal with in the final EIR, there'll be the chance for the council to give further direction.
I just want to ensure that, you know, with our Palo Alto's rate of growth, we have to also consider, take into consideration the Stanford GUP, where they have a whole bunch of housing coming up as well. So that's a large number for the schools to accommodate.
So before we get to Councilmember DuBois, I wanted to tell everyone, we're right at the cusp of where I would go from two minutes to three minutes. So at the moment, I'd still give three minutes, but I want to see how many people we put in. But that means that I want you all to get your speaker cards in, because I don't want to have to make the decision between two and three and then not see how many speaker cards I have. So if everyone could put their speaker cards in now, I'd appreciate it. Councilmember DuBois.
Several questions, so short answers appreciated. How will significant impacts in the EIR be determined if, when we're mixing and matching? So there are several that say they have significant impacts. If we pick the largest jobs growth and the largest population growth, how will we know if that triggers unmitigable impacts?
Well, that's really one of the reasons we're hoping the council will give us some direction this evening on the preferred alternative, because once we know what it is, we want to do a confirming check and an analysis to make sure that we're still falling within that range. It's part of the reason why we'd like to move forward on this discussion this evening, because we have some work to do to put together a final EIR and confirm that we haven't broken out of the boundaries of the, or the brackets that we set in the documents before.
Okay. And then you kind of touched on this, but it's still not clear. We had this 2014 notice of preparation. We've included some updates. How are we deciding what to include? Things that have changed, like we, we added the SCAP impact, I think. You know, what are we including, what are we not including as we update?
Well, we've tried to include in the scenarios changes in policy that came from, and direction that came from the council. Where we couldn't possibly make sure to capture everything is changes in the external world. And, and really, the sequel law is pretty specific, that once the EIR process is underway, you can't, you just can't change your assumptions every time the outside world changes.
Okay.
So we can do what we can, but...
Right. So I would echo Councilmember Phil Seth about very large impacts.
Understood.
So just real quick to react to Councilmember Walbach, I would say, that was kind of a false accusation. I don't think my op-ed was inaccurate. The video record will show that the motions were clearly made to remove the programs from the comp plan. Explicit statements were made that only those that were legally required would be part of the comp plan. And the process used that meeting of needing five votes to discuss an item. It's not our practice. It's clearly against our established protocols. And I think it was clear that the community was blindsided by that late-night motion. And I'm happy to hear that you've reconsidered it. So thanks.
Now we'll move to the public.
Do you have any questions? I don't need three minutes.
I don't need three minutes. We can, we can move on. We have a long, we probably have a long night towards us. So I'd like to move to the public, and we do now have reached the threshold, so everyone will have two minutes. Are you going to put it up on the board?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a procedural question?
Yeah, sure.
Among the things that are on our agenda tonight, which are myriad, I don't see commenting on the programs. And we were starting to do that at the last meeting, but ran out of time for both land use and transportation. And so I don't know if we're going to do that tonight as well, because the CAC is going to take those up just this next week, so...
So let me answer your question.
Please, and put them in some kind of order of priority about what we're going to do tonight.
Okay. So in fact, it's probably worthwhile to sort of go through how I anticipate the evening going. I think that might help everyone. So to Councilmember Holman's question, this is coming back to us on May 1st, where we will look at, we'll have an opportunity to comment on the programs in the transportation element and the land use element. There will be other opportunities as some other things come back to us to comment on the, the programs in other elements. But we don't need to do that tonight in terms of transportation or, or the land use element tonight. We'll do that on May 1st.
And so it wouldn't be, appreciate that. And also look to the director just real quickly, it's like, so any comments we would make tonight isn't going to affect one way or the other, what the CAC does this next week in working on programs?
The CAC is scheduled to meet tomorrow night. Among other things, they'll hear a presentation or summary of what the council's direction was this evening on the programs. But then we're also asking the CAC to help us identify programs that can be consolidated and to help us indicate, by indicating what they're, what they would recommend the prioritization would be. And then that information, of course, will come to council, like all of the CAC's recommendations at some point for your review.
So apologies for the, for the follow-up, but if we don't give them, give the CAC some comments about what we want to include or not include, without wordsmithing, obviously we don't want to do that, because this will be the last time they look at, I would presume, the land use and transportation program. So I'm a little bit, little bit unclear yet how this is a coordinated effort, so...
So I think to your, your question, Councilmember Holman, I think we, the purpose is for the CAC to go ahead and come up, and they give advice to council, and then it comes back to council, and then council decides. We shouldn't be giving direction to the CAC on the programmatic tonight. We're basically looking for them to come up and give advice to us, and then we go ahead and make the decisions when that comes forward to us on May 1st. It may take another meeting, I don't know. I'm assuming we can get it done on May 1st, but if it takes more time, we'll just have more meetings.
I saw it as different the previous time, so maybe we've changed, changed direction a little bit.
Okay. And then to your, to really your other implied question, which I think is a good thing, we really have what I'd call, let's see, four items tonight before us. So items number four is, is clarify and provide direction regarding the placement of programs in the comprehensive plan. We'll take that up. I think we'll take that up right after the public speaks. Then we'll move on to items number one and two, which I believe we can take up together, which is the fiscal study and comment on the EIR. And, you know, feel free to speak on that. I'm hoping frankly, that we can limit that, Councilmember comments on that to, you know, somewhere between five and eight minutes. I'd like, if we're going to get through this tonight, when I add up, when I add up the time on these four items, I come up to about one o'clock, unless we're somewhat, you know, succinct on this. And so if we can try and limit it to five, I'm not going to cut you off after five minutes, but I wanted you to try and sort of think about that a little bit. And then we're going to move to item number three, which will be the last item, which is to identify the preferred scenario. So that was sort of the plan for the evening. Hopefully that works for everyone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I just might repeat for you, that, that sounds like a good structure to, to me. The mayor is speaking to the staff recommendation, the way it's organized, on page one through four, or packet page 388 through 391, for folks to be able to, just be able to track. Thank you.
Right. No, that was very helpful. Thank you. And so now, we'll go out to the public.
If they're all in here.
They're all in here. It's up on the board. And you'll have two minutes, two minutes.
Would you encourage everyone else who's coming in?
I will. So Nielsen Buchanan to be followed by Herb Borack. Do we have Nielsen? I guess we lost Nielsen. So Herb Borack, and I'll come back to Nielsen if he shows up.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp. I had sent you a letter earlier this afternoon. Those of you who haven't had a chance to see it yet, it's in the compilation, which has this list of 37 names on the front. It's a little bit past the halfway mark, and it describes the relationship of programs to the other items in the comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policy. Councilmember Walbach was helpful in indicating that he now wants to have the programs in the body of the text of each element. And what I have provided you in the letter is background with the definition of various terms, such as goal, objective, policy, and program, from the California Planning Round Table's glossary of planning terms, whose primary author was our first Director of Planning Community and Environment, Natalie Knox. And as you know, we have an housing element that's been approved by the state with a certain number of units already through 2023, and that's organized in the same way. I don't believe it's appropriate for the plan to have vision statements. This is not about something that we think may never happen, but rather about development through a specific period of time. And in regards to the housing goals set by allocation, set by the state and by ABAG, we'll essentially have a check-in point somewhere in the middle of, of the current comp plan in 2023. So perhaps the EIR can be looking at how that time point can be used in determining decisions to go forward, rather than having a firm number of units past that date. And I'll pass out, give the clerk to hand you copies of an excerpt from that letter on the definitions.
Thank you. Hamilton Hitchens to be followed by Bob Moss.
The following are my personal comments. Many people have expressed a desire to focus on housing rather than office. Housing is the primary limiting factor for regional job growth. New office development removes sites and square footage that could be used for housing. San Jose continues to remain a better-suited place for job growth because of its superior transportation infrastructure and location, to support it in a way that Palo Alto will never be able to match. Every time you allow more office growth, such as by removing the limit on office growth downtown, or watering down an office cap with multi-year rollovers, you're reducing the rate and amount of housing that will be built in Palo Alto. The EIR makes optimistic assumptions about transportation infrastructure, such as a 45% reduction in peak car trips downtown via a TDM. Let's not base growth plans on best-case scenario assumptions to support a 21% population growth in 15 years. The programs in the transportation element do take a step towards that, and so I'm encouraged to hear that we might put them back. I would be very appreciative if we do. I was particularly concerned about the safety element, because in the safety element, the safety is actually in the programs, it's not so much in the policies. So I want to thank you for continuing to listen to the public, and thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bob Moss to be followed by Mark Mullenau.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp and councilmembers. First, I found the statement in the staff report that none of the scenarios will have any fiscal impact to be very strange. As all of you probably know, every housing unit costs the city more for services than it pays in taxes. And the city manager has even given you some data on that several years ago. His figures were $2,800 a year per housing unit. When we incorporated Rancho Palos Verdes, I did a similar study, and at that time, 45 years ago, the net cost was over $750 per housing unit per year. So even if you just talk inflation, we're in the same range, $2,500 to $3,000 per year. So if we add 4,000 housing units, the net cost to the city will be more than $11 million per year. If we add 6,000, it will be more than $16,000 per year. That is not taken into account anywhere. Then the traffic counts. You look at the table, it talks about a lower increase in traffic with 6,000 units than 4,000 units. The only way that happens is if the new process that, that is being worked on secretly by Google really works. The actual number of housing units is going to increase the number of car trips by at least eight car trips per unit per day. That's a real number. If there are single-family housing units, it'll be 10 car trips per day. That's not taken into account. You have letters from the school board members about the impacts on the schools. That is also going to have an impact on traffic. That's not taken into account. This study needs to go back for an awful lot more work.
Thank you. Mark Mullenau to be followed by Grant Dashur.
Hi there. My name is Mark Mullenau. I graduate from Stanford. So the, the basic task here is to allocate the land of Palo Alto and allocate something which is intangible, which is the right to build, something that doesn't exist but is just given by the council, to create a functioning community. And you have to look at, you know, how well this works. And there's a lot of different ways we could be doing this. The way Palo Alto does it, we have a comprehensive plan, and then you have an approval process. And I would just say, it, it doesn't work. If you look at the basic ways you can score how this works, what do you need out of a city? You need a city that has affordable housing, that funds its own infrastructure, that allocates scarce resources such as water, that doesn't have too much congestion, that is functioning economically. In some of these, Palo Alto does very well. In most of these, especially housing, Palo Alto is one of the biggest failures in the country. And this is showing some ability to change, but I would say not nearly enough. And I would just say the, the overall, you know, system just makes it so. Bob Moss, a few seconds ago, saying that new housing won't fund its own infrastructure. That's not really true. The overall averages includes the fact that so many residents are subsidized through Prop 13. New houses pay for more than their share. But he does make a case. Prop 13 limits how much every bit we allocate land can fund itself. This is large structural changes that really, we need to work with Sacramento to fix. I, I appreciate the challenge to all of us, but I, I just think we have to look at new solutions. Thank you for your time. Option six is obviously the best of what we have here, but it is clearly not enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grant Dashur to be followed by Betty Jo.
So I just wanted to, I'm Grant, I live in Midtown. I wanted to make two quick points. First, on this implementation plan debate, so... So I never really understood exactly why so much political energy was being wasted on this on both sides. It really sort of distressed me, the whole debate. I mean, it felt more like national politics than it did like local politics that I like. And so I'm, I'm glad that we seem to have come to some kind of a compromise to diffuse this as a, as a political issue, because it felt really more like a political issue than a policy issue. So I'm really quite heartened to see some, some sort of a stand down on that front. On the, on the substance of the policy here tonight, you know, I, I think that even though we are addressing a descriptive question, right? The question here is not how many housing units should we build, but rather how many housing units do we think the policies that we're setting out will build? I, I do think it has a normative component to it that, that can't be overlooked, which is to say, these comp plan policies are pretty vague, right? Like, everyone will use them to justify whatever their preconceived growth plans are regardless of what they say. And so I think that the sort of assumptions that we state, that we're purporting to believe in, in the EIR, sort of demonstrate like what we want the comp plan to mean, right? So I would strongly encourage the council to adopt at least the 6,000-unit growth proposal from scenario six. You know, to council member Niss's point that maybe it's overly aggressive, that's probably true historically, but I think that, you know, if, if we really are serious about, you know, densifying Cal Ave and, and the downtown areas to support housing growth, it, it's a pretty reasonable number, especially compared with, say, North Bayshore and Mountain View where I work, which is proposing 10,000 units over, over their planning window. So, so I think that, you know, there is a normative impact to what, what we sort of choose in the EIR, even though it's just a descriptive decision. And I, I would encourage the council to support, you know, going big on housing, since we've said politically that that's what we want to do, but I think the details matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Jo to be followed by Tiffany Griego.
I appreciate Mr. Hutchings and Mr. Walbach's comments. I request that the council reconsider the actions stripping the programs from the comp plan elements with neither consideration nor debate. Unlike the previous speaker, I think it is important, the manner how the council makes its decisions. I think the way this decision was made dismisses the value of collaborative and consensus-driven government as demonstrated by the city's citizens advisory committees and commissions. This is our democracy, and we ought to stand up for it. The council's wholesale removal of programs to appendices rejects out of hand, without public debate, years of work, city staff, and citizen volunteers to develop a proactive plan with policies and programs to address the issues of greatest import to our citizens. The citizens advisory committee recommendation considered programs and policies together because one informs the other. It was further not only the hundreds of hours of collaborative effort by staff and CAC members that were disregarded by council actions in January, but also all the other Palo Alto residents who are represented by them, citizens who take to heart the importance of participatory democracy. I fear both council and community will rue the day when such cavalier disrespect for both democracy and citizen participation drives away those volunteers who do so much to make this a community where we wish to live. Why should any answer calls to donate their time and effort providing volunteer staffing for all the commissions you recruit for and the city depends upon? I appreciate the efforts of citizen volunteers on our city commissions, committees, boards, schools, and services. I value the quality of the work product produced by the CAC, and I want and expect and hope the city council will respect it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Griego to be followed by Greg Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Griego. I'm Managing Director of Stanford Research Park. We have now thoroughly reviewed the preferred scenario as described in tonight's staff report. And as we discussed on January 30th, Stanford and the council have a shared vision of encouraging a mix of uses in the Stanford Research Park. Where we see great opportunity in the preferred scenario is the encouragement of housing in the Stanford Research Park in close proximity to jobs and to transit. We are further encouraged by the fact that the proposed scenario does not include certain regulations or policies that I fear would have been detrimental to the economic vitality of Stanford Research Park. As several of the Research Park employers and as I said to you on June 6th of 2016 last year, the Research Park employers and I were concerned about conditional use permits and other similar mechanisms, regulations, and fees designed to control the number of employees a business can hire in Palo Alto or to control the proportion of office versus R and D uses in the Stanford Research Park. Stanford expressed our concerns that proposed employee headcount caps would have had unintended consequences of undermining the ability to attract the employers that support long-term economic vitality and stability in our Palo Alto. Predictable comp plan policies and zoning ordinances have attracted newcomers like Tesla, Ford, and Jazz Financial Suticals and have been Palo Alto's vital contribution to the success of the Research Park. One additional item that I did want to bring to your attention tonight in the proposed scenario is language that supports the conversion of non-residential FAR to residential FAR. When discussing our shared vision for the diverse mix of uses in the Research Park, it was our intention to express additional or supplemental commercial, excuse me, housing growth on top of commercial growth. I wanted to make sure to make that clear to you. So we, we ask that you take an action to make that clear, that any housing in the Research Park would add to and not subtract from any current commercial growth that is currently available under current zoning. We will also submit some additional comments in writing by the deadline. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Former Vice Mayor Greg Schmidt to be followed by Bill Ross.
Good evening. It is a great opportunity for the council, who's now beginning to look across the elements, looking for consistency. It's important to be explicit in that consistency. I'd like to just spend my time talking about the 3 million job growth in the new comp plan. 3 million is a lot. 1.3 is already voted on, but that doesn't mean that the impacts have been felt yet. They will be felt during the course of the new comp plan. The 1.7 by itself is twice as high a growth rate in new commercial square footage as was true between 1989 and 2015. Twice the rate of growth. Already, you have spent time in the last few weeks looking at TMAs, RPPs. How do we deal with the existing problem of traffic and congestion? The city themselves have been monitoring in the downtown area congestion, and they admit there are 777 spaces needed in the residential areas to fully park. And when they asked for commercial permits in the residential area, they asked for 1,400. Even dealing with the current situation costs money. And where does the money come from? The only effective TMA in the city is the SUMC, in which Stanford Medical Center has pledged $2.5 million per year to make it work, to get one-third of the people out of cars.
Thank you very much. Bill Ross to be followed by Don McDougal.
Bill will speak very loudly. Good evening. My comments focus, focus on the proposed draft supplement to the DEIR, which on page four incorporates the reference to that document. A review of that document would indicate that it does not contain a current, accurate project description reflecting your actions of January 30th. For example, looking at the action minutes, attachment F to the staff report at page 11, there's no indication of the action required by a board majority of Walbach, Ness, Scharf, Fine, and Tanaka, directing staff to remove from the final draft of the comprehensive plan all programs from the land use element not required by state law and to take them up at a later time. There are four other substantive council actions that affect the project description, that is, the substantive content of the comprehensive plan. I would also ask, I think there's another person that has yielded their time to me. If you examine the substantive sections of this supplement, those project changes aren't, aren't set forth. This is true with respect to the executive summary, the introduction, the project description particularly. And if the project description is not accurate, then the alternative sections, point 6.1, is also inaccurate because you have no way to determine what's a reasonable alternative. The same is obviously true with respect to the traffic section. I would respectfully suggest that the appropriate action is to get a proper project description in the supplement to the draft, EIR, draft, DEIR, EIR for the project before you proceed. Right now, those substantive changes aren't reflected there. So how can any member of the public, much, much less members of your council, comment on that supplement to the DEIR?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you announce that if anyone else is coming in, you might want to?
Don McDougal to be followed by Ken Joy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. First, I-
Thanks, Don.
Sorry, Don. Can we start again? Mr. Mayor, sir. All I want to do tonight is, is comment in the time I have on the, on the programs and the allocation of the programs. As I've said and, and as I've written, the, the draft of the comprehensive plan that we have today represents a great deal of time, effort, and thought, and compromise by, and an awful lot of broad citizen input. I think it is a good and complete work as it is. It is a strong guideline, a guideline, not rules, for action, and it's not something that has to be followed. I'd like to urge council to, number one, keep the number of programs that are already there, maybe even some of the deleted ones. Keep the programs with the policies. That's the way we developed them in the first place. Repeat the programs in an implementation section in an element if that's necessary and useful. And lastly, I would say properly finish the plan, not by trying a prioritization, but in fact defining which programs would be reviewed and initiated or deleted in one, five, or 15-year periods. In terms of the number of programs we have, I'll share my analysis with you, but it's not as dire, it's not as large as, as you think it is. And the places where we have added more programs should be informational to the staff, the council, and even the citizens. We've added programs in community services because I think this is a much more compassionate plan than we had before. We added them in transportation because that's what everybody talks about, reducing single occupancy vehicles. And we added them in the natural environment because I think we understand the natural environment and the importance of the urban forest and water and energy to our city. So I urge us to simply go ahead, put them into timeframe buckets, initiate the review process, and get on with using the comp plan as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Joy to be followed by Arthur Keller.
Good evening. I'm a member, resident of the Ventura neighborhood. I want to thank the CAC, staff, and consultants who've worked on this comprehensive plan. It's a gigantic effort. I appreciate their work. I have taken one thing primarily from that, which is the jobs housing number. I encourage you to make that number as small as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Keller to be followed by Andrew Granato.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Firstly, I submitted, the, Dan Garber and I co-chair submitted a letter to council, which didn't seem to make it into your packet. Can I give it to staff? So the next comments are going to be my personal comments. First, I have a concern about the impacts on schools and that we're not really taking into account how many additional schools we'd need, how much crowding we'd have on these schools. We can, as I long say, we can build two-story school buildings, but we can't build two-story playing fields. I have concerns about adding more jobs and increase in employed residents under the various scenarios. I actually have concerns about choosing a scenario before all the comments of the DIR have been in, which isn't until about 10 days from now. I also, I, I didn't hear it, but I read the comments and the reports of the State of City address, where Mayor Scharf promised that single-family residential neighborhoods would stay the same, but that won't be the case with the increases in FAR and lot coverage and reductions in setbacks that were proposed by certain council members for accessory dwelling units. And I also have concerns about overly optimistic and unproven traffic reduction predictions. And our predictions in terms of vehicle miles traveled, our prediction in terms of, I didn't see in terms of, of LOS. In terms of this, we're based on a, a downtown TMA that has not proven itself of TDM programs, where we, we haven't enforced them ever, except for the Stanford Medical Center. And therefore, essentially, we need to prove and show that these work before we can rely on them. Thank you.
Andrew Granato to be followed by Stephen Levy.
My name is Andrew Granato. I am an undergraduate student who has been writing about housing politics and policy in Palo Alto and the Bay Area for the past year. I'd like to speak strongly in favor of scenario six, and if anything, I would go further in increasing the number of housing units in the Palo Alto area. As has been said before, Mountain View is adding about 10,000 housing units in North Bayshore, so I certainly think it's feasible for Palo Alto to add 6,000 units, especially given the height limit and the opportunities, including in the Stanford Shopping Center. This year, me and my fellow seniors are going on our first job hunts, and what I hear from a lot of people is that they would love to be able to join local Bay Area communities and become part of those communities and support them, but they, that they simply cannot afford to stay in the Bay Area. The only exceptions being people who are going to be making extremely high salaries just out of undergrad salaries that are way up on the tail of salaries in the United States and that the vast majority of people do not have. Because housing prices are, after all, at the end of the day, just a function of housing supply and housing demand, the cumulative effect of the Bay Area's housing restrictions has been the kinds of prices that we've seen in Palo Alto and across the South Bay in particular, which also has the effect of disproportionately locking out Black and Latino citizens who would like to contribute to these communities as well. So I, I do think that it's very important that Palo Alto and other South Bay communities do their part to make these places more accessible and affordable, and I urge Palo Alto to adopt scenario six. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could have Stephen Levy to be followed by Penny Ellison.
I'd like first to respond to Liz's question about how could we build so many more units than we didn't in the past? And I think both Tiffany Griego and Hillary laid that out. We have so many different areas and policies now. The Research Park, the Medical Center, El Camino, your action on accessory dwelling units, and the idea of converting, not in the Research Park, but in downtown and Cal Ave, some commercial FAR to housing and mixed use. So I think we can do a whole lot better. Can we do 6,000? I don't know. Some number between 4,500 and 6,000 certainly seems possible if we want to do it. Jim, after hearing that school discussion, I went on my iPad, and when you sit down with them, they need to know that DOF is projecting that this county will add 300,000 people between 2015 and 2030 and have 100,000 fewer students. So somehow, and I think the idea is they only looked at the added units, they didn't look at the reduced number of children that would be in the existing units from aging and falling birth rates. But I'll just tell you, that finding is way different than what is projected for this county. On the comp plan, I hope, Corey, when you make the motion, you add some of the things that we've heard, that the programs go under the policies, that staff be encouraged not to dismantle, but to consolidate a whole bunch of programs under a heading, like for bicycles, we probably don't need 23 or four, would do, and keep that breadth. And I don't know, I thought your idea about priorities and flexibility and coming back to it every year was pretty good. Given that, I don't much care where they go, as long as they aren't overwhelming, they're under the programs. One last thing, please. We asked somebody from the league to come and read that letter. We told them it was eight o'clock. If they come here before we comment, please let them read the league's letter.
Thank you. Penny Ellison to be followed by Jeff Lewinsky.
You'll be glad to know that I checked a whole bunch of things off my list because other people have said them. So a couple of things. I, I first of all, want to say I'm glad to hear that a lot of people are thinking about school impacts. school impacts. That's a good thing. I have, I had, I also have some concerns about overly optimistic projections on TDM opportunity, and I think we should really look carefully at that. And I wanted to thank Councilmember Wolbach for listening to the public. I listened to a lot of you. I called some of you to kind of understand about the programs and your thinking around that. And I have to say that I, I think that the programs belong with the goals and policies. I remember the first time I read the comp plan, and I, it took me a long time to get to the appendix. And I think this is a document for the citizens as much as it is a document for you on the dais and for our city staff. I think it's important that it's accessible for, for people the very first time they come to it. And so I'm glad to hear that. I hope that you'll keep the programs in there. And finally, I want to comment that when I took a look today at the changes in the comp plan, I noticed, I have to sum up, I noticed that, that taking the programs out really created a lack of alignment between the land use and transportation elements. And I, and so that's my final reason for keeping that in there, and there were some details on that. And I had one of the, oh, it's gone now, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff Lewinsky to be followed by Katie Talbert.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. Just a few years ago, the council and city staff sent a letter to ABAG that pointed out adding 2,860 units was, quote, "completely unachievable." It called such a goal, quote, "an exercise in futility," citing impacts on neighborhoods and infrastructure. It said the effect on our schools, quote, "cannot be accommodated." So why tonight are we even talking about such growth or more? Well, you can look at my neighborhood as a good example of what happens when the city believes it can ignore these realities. We were promised for the Edgewood Shopping Center that putting in new housing in the parking lot would not impact parking. Yet, it has. Even with the center half-occupied, parking there is so bad that it turns out the owner, Sand Hill Properties, secretly asked the city to let them put cars onto neighborhood streets without, by the way, notifying neighbors. We were told traffic wouldn't be a problem, but the neighbors all point out how bad it's become. And most ironically, we were told that adding housing would help, but it turns out the houses that were added sold for about $3 million each, more than the cost of the single-family homes around them. So it actually made affordability worse. In summary, the city in the past did not think we could grow much, and when we were promised growth that wouldn't impact parking, traffic, or affordability, the city was wrong on all three counts. So please remember that tonight. Thank you.
If any of you have not turned in your cards yet, could you turn them in now so that we can add you to the list and have some kind of tracking of how many will be speaking tonight? Thanks. Katie Talbert.
Good evening. More and more people want to live in Palo Alto because it is beautiful, it is filled with interesting people, it is a home of innovation, and some people want to live here because it's home. For whatever reason, Palo Alto needs a lot of housing, a lot more housing. When you're planning for that housing, I am going to ask you to keep in mind the needs of your most vulnerable population, the developmentally disabled. They grew up here, they're members of the community, and they add lots of diversity and vibrancy to the community. Palo Alto has a persistent problem with housing, the developmentally disabled, and I hope that you will consider that when you are looking into your housing discussion here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Sung to be followed by Annette Ross.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the members of council. Thank you. My name is Amy Sung. I am here to speak before you that I am very excited that you see that the scenario six is calling for at least 6,000 units to be built. Let's be honest about housing. Housing is short, that there is a severe housing shortage up and down the peninsula. And looking at San Francisco, all the way down to San Jose, all our neighboring cities are doing something to try to address this issue. There is a growing pain, and the pain it is. So we are looking at the council, we are looking to the council for leadership. You know, Musk is taking us to the moon, and anything could happen. So that is one. And, and so how are we going to address, you know, this, sound like a lot of units? 6,000, 6,000 units in like 10, 15 years, that it really is not that many in, in, you know, per year. So that there's a, an array of housing types that can be imagined between single-family homes and apartments. There's duplex condos and townhouses and multiplexes. But finally, I actually wanted to address, as a member of the CAC, I just really applaud that Councilmember Wolbach for, for the proposal to separate the programs from the entire the complaint. I just heard that the old complaint has about 266 programs, and that during the course of its existence, about 15% of it has been implemented. So our current complaint that I am a member of, that we are working on, has more than 400 programs. So it is, it is really just a good idea to have it consolidated in one place and prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Ross to be followed by Shawnee Kleinhouse.
Councilmembers Phil Seth and Koo covered my concerns about what Stanford is doing, and I hope that you will factor that into your decisions tonight. And I think Greg Schmid's comments were right on point. I urge practicality. I think there's no question that scenario six is what we need, but we kind of messed things up over the last several years and took away some of our opportunities to do it land-wise. So I think we have to be practical. I think we have to fix some of our problems before we proceed and make decisions that will make our problems worse because you'll end up back in the same place in 10 years trying to fix bigger issues. And that's really all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawnee Kleinhouse to be followed by Deion Moran.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and City Council. First step in the redemption seems to be taking place. Thank you. The next one that I want to ask you for is to not ask the CAC to do prioritization exercise tomorrow. We've done that in the subcommittee. We found that to be extremely stressful, Sophie's Choice, do you want this one or do you want that one? And then a few people, oh, let's put all our eggs in one basket. And then there's, what is the process for that? I don't think we need to do that. You can keep all the programs. We should work on consistency. We should make sure that everything fits together. But we don't need to start prioritizing because when you do that, the small voices are lost. The people who came to speak on very specific issues and actually made it into a program may end up not being represented there. So I ask you for the next step in that motion that is coming up. Don't ask the CAC to do prioritization. Focus on consistency, focusing on the plan, working together well. Focus on prioritization in some future special meeting for prioritization of programs every year, if you like, like other cities are doing, but not in this format. It's wrong, and it's really, really stressful. And if that happens tomorrow, I'm not going to go there, I can tell you now. It's just too much stress. Thank you.
Thank you. Deion Moran to be followed by former Mayor Pat Burt.
Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Niss, and honorable council members, I ask the council to support a goal of 6,000 new homes in the comp plan scenario as a, as a minimum in this case. And for me, it's a matter of, a gentleman spoke before about normative. I believe it's that, that what people are doing largely in this city at this point, the culture so far has been, let's look at traffic and safety, but let's not focus on people's needs. And I think first you can focus on people's needs, and then you can creatively deal with transportation solutions which, which work to the advantage of both. So tonight, I implore you to support the addition of more housing in Palo Alto. Serving on the Human Relations Commission for three years recently, I came to understand there's a serious need for more housing in Palo Alto. I'm particularly interested in seniors, as you know. I think that the issue of housing is widespread, however, among all sorts of members of our community. I feel that the population of over 50-year-olds would greatly benefit from scenarios that would allow them to live in smaller units in communities of many close-knit and more densely living-together groups. This would allow them to be nearer to stores and walkable areas and to benefit from shared services, including shared transportation. I support the concept of converting commercial FAR to residential units. This would benefit mixed-use projects downtown. All of the above, if done respectfully, could reduce the demand for cars and transportation. The culture of our community could be redirected towards the use of public transportation, particularly if the city creates different kinds of transportation alternatives, such as small buses or cars, et cetera. We need to have diverse housing for the diverse community that has come to Palo Alto and to also help regional needs. You know, as an anecdote, as a, as a defense attorney, I had to deal with old people living in, alone in the houses, residential houses here, and they were losing their driver's license, and this was a shame. So I asked for more housing and different kinds of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Former Mayor Pat Burt to be followed by Deb Golding.
Good evening. The CAC and staff agree that the plan would benefit from streamlining the programs. Also, there's been a concern expressed by the council that the current plan embraces contradictory objectives. While I describe the plan as having deliberate tensions rather than contradictions, that problem should be solved rather than abrogated. Either way, programs provide greater clarity rather than less. The issue was raised at the end of a long meeting without forewarning to the public or thoughtful discourse. As the mayor emphasized in his State of the City speech, Palo Alto places high value on transparent and meaningful public participation. Clearly, this recent action did not meet that standard. There have also been misrepresentations about what actually occurred at your January meeting. Removal of the programs was not merely a formatting change. As was made explicitly clear at the meeting, the intention was to eliminate all programs. The programs would be referenced merely as an addendum and, as alternatives to be considered by a future council and not adopted in the plan. This is a striking difference from the current plan where all programs are officially part of it. Elimination of programs results in greater arbitrariness in decisions by councils, and programs provide essential guidance to staff on how to review future projects. The comp plan needs to be an enduring and represent the community consensus. That's why last year, we did not rush to forward the plan under the prior council. We agreed to proceed deliberately, allowing the CAC to work to reconcile different viewpoints of the community.
Thank you. Deb Golding to be followed by Bonnie Packer.
I'm here to speak in favor of the 6,000... Down? Oh, thank you. I'm here to speak in favor of the 6,000 housing units. In my opinion, it's not whether or not, it's how. If they're well-planned and implemented, it's not going to be a problem. Fortunately, on this council, we have some brilliant planning minds. Thank you, Greg. And I feel confident that that's possible. You know, as for your comprehensive, I mean, it's just a drop in the bucket. Lives are being crushed from lack of housing. It's been horrible. I've watched it all my life. And yeah, this is just a drop in the bucket, but we owe it to the greater community to provide our little drop. You know, as far as your comprehensive plan goes, Lydia, please listen. Thank you. As far as our comprehensive plan goes, man proposes and God disposes. The question is, are you going to make a righteous decision or a selfish one?
Thank you. Bonnie Packer to be followed by Trina Levercheck.
I'm taking the place of Bonnie.
Okay. And you need to state your name?
Trina Levercheck.
Okay, so Bonnie's not speaking tonight?
Right.
Got it.
I thought this discussion was starting at eight, so when she didn't see me here earlier, she stepped up. Anyway, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Trina Levercheck. I'm reading this letter on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. Dear Mayor Scharf and City Council members, the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto has longstanding positions in support of diverse housing opportunities for all, particularly for very low, low, and moderate-income people, and in support of an efficient and effective transportation system to serve all, particularly those who are transit-dependent. Accordingly, we take this opportunity to make the following points regarding the supplement to the draft environmental impact report, EIR, on the update to the comprehensive plan and on the draft plan itself. There are many policies in the draft comprehensive plan which, if implemented, could result in a large number of additional housing units. The existing housing crisis will most likely not go away over the life of this draft comprehensive plan. Thus, we urge you to support these policies and to include in the draft EIR, preferred scenario, the number of housing units denoted in scenario number six, 6,000. Including this high number of housing units in the preferred scenario would provide you with the information you need regarding the environmental impacts of these housing policies. There are a number of policies in the transportation element of the draft comprehensive plan regarding adequate transit options for all. We urge you to ensure that the fiscal study contains an analysis of the costs for the expansion of the city's shuttle service or a comparable program to greatly improve transit in Palo Alto and to reduce traffic congestion. Thank you for considering our comments, and the letter is signed by Mary Alice Thornton, the first vice president of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Kleinberg to be followed by, or former Mayor Judy Kleinberg, to be followed by John Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. I'm going to make this quick. I want to congratulate you on your vote to add accessory dwelling units, not granny units, now that I'm a granny, I don't like that term. Thank you for adding housing in the residential areas and doing it in the way that you did, which was thoughtful, so that it's not compressed and adding problems in the neighborhoods. Now you have another opportunity, a bold opportunity, to add housing in transit-oriented areas where it can be built conveniently, effectively, and where developers can make it work because they can do mixed use and have retail on the bottom, then some housing on the top, and some offices in the middle. I support having the housing not have as much parking because we hope those people will be self-selected, and they will be taking public transit or biking or walking to work. And then it is the retailers and the office people who actually need someplace to park. And as a matter of fact, it's the old buildings where there isn't any place for retail to have parking that really have been creating a problem. So thank you for taking this up tonight. We support scenario six. Be bold, go for it. Let's get the housing downtown and in areas where there's transit, and let's help solve some of this housing jobs imbalance. Thanks.
Thank you. John Kelly to be followed by Lisa Van Dusen.
Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Niss, council members, coming after former Mayor Judy Kleinberg is a tough act to follow, so I can start off by saying I support everything that she just told you. The one thing I'd really like to add, however, is how the resolution that you adopted previously concerning ADUs impacts your decision tonight. So I too would like to commend you and congratulate you on making the proper decision about accessory dwelling units. That's, that's a really important step forward for the community. What I've found over the last couple of years, ever since the comp plan's been going, however, is that too little attention has been paid to the impact that accessory dwelling units can have on the overall housing count, and especially on the housing diversity issue. It's been mentioned before that we don't just have a housing crisis, we have a housing diversity crisis. So ADUs are going to be an important step, and I think, given your prior decision on the ADU issue, not only can you go with scenario six, but I would encourage you to go a step further. I think, maybe it was a year ago, someone was asking at one of these earlier comp plan review meetings, how many units? And I got up here and told you 10,000, which probably sounded absurd, but I'm going to repeat that tonight. I actually think 10,000 is the correct number that our community is going to need over the lifetime of the comp plan revision. So if you think about it, over that period of time, more than a decade, ADUs, I think, can contribute a substantial amount. And given what you've already decided, I would encourage you not only to adopt scenario six, but to consider going further. Maybe you're not going to see that 10,000 being the right number, maybe something closer to 7,500 would be appropriate in your judgment. But in my mind, 10,000 units is what we really need in this community. We need many, many more. We need many, many more smaller units. We need something that's going to accommodate seniors, young people, young families, so that we don't lose what's really vital about Palo Alto. It's not parking, and it's not traffic-free movement from point A to point B. It's the people that really constitutes the most important thing we have in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Van Dusen, to be followed by David Fudenberger.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. I will try to be very brief here. I echo the 6,000 or greater number, Scenario Six, in the comprehensive plan, and hope that you will make the most of what you've already started with the accessory dwelling unit initiative that was voted on recently. Congratulations on that. I just wanted to share a couple of brief stories that have stuck with me. The battery in my Prius has died a couple of times recently, and both times recently, the people came to help me from AAA, were brought up without me mentioning it, that they were moving away because of housing costs, and they were already living in pretty compromised circumstances. So I'm just seeing, you know, the people that are part of our community and part of helping us live our lives, cars or no cars, are getting squeezed out. And I'm just wondering where, who's going to be doing a lot of the jobs that we need to survive. So I think it's interesting to think about that. In addition, I hope we can be, continue to be really creative, both about transit and transportation and about our housing. I think many people can live and want to live, actually, in very small spaces, so don't forget about micro-units in addition to ADUs. And I personally would love to be able to ride my bike, not with cars, but away from cars, on bike paths and places like by the creeks and other off-road areas. So I just urge you, a lot of people have talked about the planning minds up there and the creativity. I'd urge you to be as creative and out of the box in the way that you think about how we might achieve these goals. Thank you, and thanks to the comprehensive plan for all their work.
Thank you. David Fudenberger, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Mayor. Mayor Scharf, City Council. Over the past 10 years, traffic and congestion in Palo Alto have gotten, have become significantly worse. This is a major problem for residents and employees. Rather than discussing mitigating effects of jobs and housing on traffic, we should require a net decrease in traffic, not a reduction in rate of increase, as a condition to approving any more large-scale growth. My request to you, the council, please ensure we have an in-place, effective, net-traffic-reduction program in place before approving any major new additions. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Bruce Chen.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and City Council. I'm delighted to see so many people mentioning the word "small," smaller units. I think that's where we got off the track a long time ago, was thinking that luxurious and nice and beautiful had to be large, or at least medium-sized. And I'd like to be able to show you that small is beautiful. But I'd like to approach it from, starting with a different point. The council has done a lot to punish people for riding in their cars. We slugabeds, we slackers, we unfit. It's just awful. I would like to suggest that instead, you do something positive for people who don't want to use cars or can't use cars. Their licenses have been taken away. They're, they can't, they have glaucoma, they have whatever. So I'd like to suggest that you have, that you start by having next to, on El Camino, that would be, let's say, the 22 and the 522, that you have the same F A R, the same net square footage, but divided up into small, like a hotel residential homes. They could be beautiful. You could be the Fairmont Hotel. And they could have marble showers, but they could still be very affordable, because you could put a lot of them, twice as many, three times as many, as you could put, for instance, in 600-square-feet apartments. You could, and I would like to suggest that one way that would make them elegant would be if they were built like 101 Alma, with balconies, room-sized balconies, straight across. And that's my contribution to this. And good luck.
Thank you very much. Bruce Chen, to be followed by Becky Sanders.
Hey, good evening, guys. So I strongly object to the Scenario Six. What I think is, the city needs to take an approach to look at our sustainable growth, right? Everybody looking at this, how we can grow, but you have to look at not only the road, but also how we can build the city infrastructure to support this additional 600 unit. You are talking about 20,000 people that could live in Palo Alto. Does the water, does the city's water, you know, facility can support this? Not to mention whether the school have the resources to support the next generation, you know, of the city. I have two kids in the school. Right now, you know, Palo Alto School has very good teacher and student ratio at around 22 for elementary school students. If you think about this additional people moving into the city, how we can solve that? You know, how we can let them enjoy the high quality of the city's education without sacrificing, you know, the quality of education for the next generation? I also want to say that city needs to proceed with caution with this motion, whatever. You guys need to listen to more. I talk with my neighborhood about this scenario. They seems don't have enough information yet, and they really want to know more. I think, you know, I trust you guys' instinct and experience, but I think the city's residents needs to have a more say in these different scenarios. And particularly, I want to mention, there is a state investigation going on, and I highly doubt, you know, some of the motivation behind the Scenario proposals. Yep, that's from me.
Thank you. Becky Sanders, to be followed by Dan Garber.
I'm bringing my light. Is my light on?
Just start talking.
Okay, okay. Good evening, City Council members. Thank you for your service. Listening to the debate tonight, we have had an interesting marriage between the disparate voices for housing. But may I ask, housing for whom? Will this housing be made available to the developmentally disabled, or the most vulnerable, the low-wage workers, seniors, workers, or to the most privileged, to the people that can't afford? Developers understandably seek to maximize profits. So you see the disconnect between cravers of rapid growth and seekers for social justice. So I challenge you to, how can you solve that disconnect? So much money has been thrown into lobbying for pro-growth in this town, and those of us without the money or the lobbying access are left blowing in the wind. Therefore, I can't in good conscience support Scenario Six, because I believe the housing will go to serve the most privileged. Also, just as an aside, I actually couldn't believe my ears, because I believe on City Council Procedures, Page 3, Section D, Bullet 1, it says, "All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any individual." So I would really suggest that council pay attention to that rule and not, and admonish people not to address council members individually. I found some of the remarks earlier a little bit disconcerting. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Garber, to be followed by our final speaker, Joe Hirsch.
Dan Garber, Co-Chair of the CAC. Just a couple of topics. The co-chair and I, Arthur Keller and I, have submitted a letter which you have received. I'd like to thank Councilmember Wobak for reconsidering his position on the location of the programs in the comp plan. If the council decides to not do that, we also suggest then that the council consider how the CAC should be used going forward. We would recommend further work by the CAC to support the council in working through the programs and policies, potentially reconsidering which are to be in which bucket. But regardless of which way the council goes, I would appreciate some discussion around how the council would like to utilize the CAC's efforts, particularly in regards to prioritization of the remaining, of the programs and policies that are in place. We've assumed that we should be doing that. If you have other thoughts that we should not be, or ways that we should be directing our focus, I'd appreciate some comments regarding those topics. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Joe Hirsch.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I had not planned to speak tonight, but a couple of comments caught my ear. Yes, we are looking for leadership, thoughtful, sound leadership going forward. Another person mentioned focusing on people's needs. I think we need to focus in on the needs of the current residents who are here now. More and more people bring more and more cars. No matter what people say, you need a car in this area. You can use traffic every now and then, a transit, mass transit, trains, whatever, every now and then, but ultimately, you will fall back on a car. And that leads to greater and greater congestion. As I found out, driving to the city three times in the past week, couldn't believe how bad it was, starting out being bad in Palo Alto, and then all the way up to the city. Fix the traffic and parking problems first, if you can. Have a plan in place that will mitigate the problems we have now. And then gradually expand housing to the extent it can be accommodated without adversely affecting the quality of life for all of us, those who are here now and those who will come afterwards. I feel that we're at a tipping point. I've always said this area, since I've been here, since 1972, is paradise. I am very fearful we are going to paradise lost. So we need thoughtful leadership about how we can grow without ruining what we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll return to council. So we're going to take up item number four on the staff report, which is, you know, packet page 300 for the audience, which is clarify and provide additional direction regarding the placement of programs in the comprehensive plan update. Specifically, select either A or B. Councilmember Wobak has your light on.
Yeah, I've sent a motion to the city clerk. I don't know if you have it available, but I would like to make a motion regarding this portion. That's Part Four of Item 16. And I'm open to, you know, possible amendments, especially in light of some of the comments we heard from CAC members, including Shani Kleinhaus and Don McDougall, about the question of how the CAC can best be utilized to help with the questions of prioritization, timing, et cetera. But here's the motion as a starting point. Staff to proceed with Option 4B, to include the programs in the implementation plan and also in the main body of the comprehensive plan. B, staff to complete the process of consolidating redundant programs and eliminating infeasible policies and programs. C, staff to incorporate suggestions from CAC and the public and use their own judgment to identify relative priority and timeline for implementing programs, such as maintain current practice, short-term, medium-term, or long-term, or current, one-year, five-year, 13-year, and estimate level of effort or cost associated with each program, such as low, medium, or high. And D, staff to return to council to review the above prior to adoption.
I'd second that.
Thanks.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
I spoke quite a bit to this issue prior to going to the public, but again, you know, just especially for those who came in after those initial comments, you know, I think that we've had actually really robust conversation over the last couple of months. There's been a good civic discourse. I actually thought it was important that, on the 30th, we had a greater discussion about this than some of the other items. You know, that was a request that was made, and I thought that was important, that we did a full round of conversation about this item. We continued the item. You know, we did not, you know, lock this motion in stone, or the prior idea of, you know, moving the programs out only into the implementation section. We did not lock in stone. We've had that public input. I've very much valued that. And as I said before, I didn't do a very good job articulating what I really intended and my reasoning in January. And if I'm ever lucky enough to have kids and raise them in Palo Alto, I'll tell them when they make a mess, they should clean it up.
Okay. Councilmember DuBois, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah. So we got several letters from the CAC, from both chairs of the CAC, from PAN, several other neighborhood associations, lots of voters. I think this is the right thing to do. Couple of quick comments and a question. We got some information on how many programs were completed in the past, and I didn't have time to go through the comp plan. But there, I saw there were a lot of programs that were essentially overlays, like there was around grocery stores, I saw three, like trying to seat public bathrooms, trying to stripe parking lots. Those programs are always in effect, so I don't know if we count those as completed, because when I look at it, I have a feeling we actually act on more than we reported in that total.
Thank you, council member. You're saying that there are some that are ongoing, that maybe we should, we could consider completed?
Yeah, we've been following them. They're kind of always in effect.
Yeah, I'm sure we could count the numbers slightly differently, and I appreciate that point.
And then, will this draft, like, once we consolidate and prioritize, will this go to the P T C?
I'm sorry, you were talking about the implementation or the whole document?
The land use element, transportation.
Okay. So our idea is to get the city council input on all of the elements, and we're hoping that you will refer all of them as a package to the P T C before your break in the summer.
Okay. So I don't know if we need to add that to D, but I would, as long as that's understood, I would suggest it does go to the P T C. And so I was going to make a motion, this is almost identical, so I'll support this motion.
Councilmember Koo.
So I just want to say thank you very much, Councilmember Wobak, for bringing back the programs. As one of the member in the community said, I think it was Betty Jo Chang who said that the policies and programs go together because one informs the other. I think that's absolutely true, so I really appreciate.
Councilmember Holman.
Couple of things. One touches on what Councilmember DuBois said, which is, some of them are, like, ongoing. Some of the programs are ongoing, so they're probably not counted among the done or accomplished. But otherwise, some of the programs are also referred to, policies, goals, and programs are referred to also when something comes before the council, before the city staff, before the community, about being consistent with. So they also provide benchmarks, and I think they provide value that way as well. So question about B, which is the second part of that, and eliminating infeasible policies and programs. So the question around that one is, who determines if they're infeasible policies or programs? And the other is, so the part of me that's a bit idealistic is sort of like, well, why shouldn't we dream? Because you never can tell, you know, something may change in the life of the comp plan is for quite some while. So if it's, are we going to have 42 acres of parkland in town? Well, of course, because there's not land available, so to use an extreme example that obviously is infeasible. But I guess, what were you intending by that, maker of the motion?
So I'm not sure if there are any that are infeasible. I did intend for that to go to staff to, you know, to continue the process, but I understand staff has already begun. And I'll just add that I understand you've already brought the number of programs below 400, which means if you remove, I believe if you remove just, was it the public safety and the environment elements, we're actually only within two programs as far as the numbers compared to the 98 comp plans. We're already on the right track, I think. So I did intend for that to go back to staff for that work. And also from those OPR guidelines I mentioned before, there's something that says, also on Page 46, it says-- I mentioned before, there's something that says, also on page 46, it says, "Adopting infeasible planning policies and implementation measures is a waste of time. To avoid this, the planners who will be implementing the plan should be involved in its preparation." And so I meant that part B in the motion to reflect that guideline from the state.
And that could come a part as, could be addressed, I would think, as a part of the prioritization. I don't know, does Director Giedemann have any comments on that?
Well, obviously, our intention is not to include programs that are in themselves infeasible in the document. So if there are any, you know, we would highlight those and not want to carry those forward. I think in terms of the implementation programs, we think of feasibility more, as Councilmember Holman suggests, that in the prioritization process, I think we're, we all acknowledge that it's not going to be feasible. We're not going to have the resources to implement all of them. So it is going to be an exercise in prioritization in the plan, and then in subsequent annual reviews to make sure that we're prioritizing what we should be.
Okay, thank you. So I guess with that, I appreciate that this has been, that the program's been restored to the comprehensive plan. And just, I guess I was a little bit uncomfortable with the comments. I've been going back and forth with myself whether I would make a comment about this or not. But I was, I appreciate this action, but I was also uncomfortable with how it was presented, with accusations about others. And so I would hope that as we go forward as a council, that we're respectful of each other and just maybe have disagreement, but not make accusations about others. And so with that, I appreciate the motion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ness.
I would echo what Lydia Koo said, which is congratulations to you, Corey. It's, it's important to listen to the public, and we certainly heard from the public on this one very, very clearly. And I, again, would look at B, which talks about the process of consolidating redundant programs and so forth. I think that's one of the most important parts of this motion. And one of the conversations we've had earlier about this, Hillary, as I recall, we talked about the number of programs that had been implemented in the last comp plan. Was it roughly 15%? So if we look at a plan that had 200-plus programs in it, and 15% were done after 15 years, 15 years plus, then I think as we look at this, that the consolidation and elimination where possible is really important, because these programs should really complement the policy. And I think that's precisely what you've said tonight. And that's why, did you want to make a comment? Because I think that's, that's one of the most important parts of this. Putting it back in clearly is the right thing to do, but I think also making it really fit, as they say, the jacket, in this case, would really make a difference. So you don't want to be, as they say, strait-jacketed, but you do want that jacket to fit the, to fit the policy. And I think that, that is where this is heading. But again, thank you to Councilmember Walbach for, as he said, cleaning up his mess.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
I'm voting yes.
Yeah, thanks. So, yeah, you know, I think the point about the relation of the programs and the policies is really important. I think, you know, I think the, I think the original action was pretty late at night, and maybe we were a little bit quick to do that. So I'm glad to see we're going to, we're going to sort of revisit that. I think these comp plan issues are such long-term impacts. I think, you know, we really need to think carefully through stuff that affects the comp plan. So I'm glad to see it's happening.
Councilmember Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then thank you, Councilmember Walbach, for this. Obviously, we did act a bit rationally, and I think we heard loud and clear from the community. And that's democracy in action, isn't it? But I do think it's important to underline what our intent was when we made this motion and voted on it after midnight a month and a half ago. As I understood it, I think our intent was to streamline the programs, and yes, at times eliminate redundancies or programs which may have been out of step with their policies. So I was pretty interested in co-chair Garber's comment about what role the CAC should play going forward. And I think we have an opportunity right now to help them support this community and the councils as we move forward. I think it is important for the CAC to make sure that programs do support the policies, that each program within those policies is supporting it, and that we're not going beyond that. I think it's also important to prioritize them. And the word infeasible, actually, I think is helpful in some ways. There are certain programs that we'd love to see done, but they may not be feasible in Palo Alto at this time, and we should note that and perhaps remove them if so. And then finally, to Vice Mayor Ness's point about the number of programs, I think one of our reasons for thinking of shifting where these programs are is the sheer number of them and what burden that costs to staff. So if the CAC would be aware of that as well, I think that's an important consideration. Otherwise, I'd be happy to support this.
And with that, let's vote on, oh, Councilmember Walbach, you've spoken once. Is it really short?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I hadn't heard any suggestions, but as I indicated before, I'd be open to amendments because I have heard some concerns, and we'd heard tonight concerns from some CAC members, you know, about the process, the, you know, the sticker-ing process that has been tried in the CAC, where they each provide a priority, you know, or try to identify their favorite programs within each element. You know, there's a lot of consternation about whether that was the right process or the wrong process. I don't think we should be giving the specific direction to the CAC and staff for how to conduct your, the meetings, especially tomorrow. But I just would comment that I'd encourage the staff and the CAC chairs to, you know, think creatively about a process where people feel like they're.
Thank you, Councilmember Walbach. Now, if we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. Okay. Now we get back to the next staff recommendation, which is to conduct the public hearing, which we've done, on the supplement to the draft environmental impact report, and come back to council members for councilmember comments on the draft EIR, and also on the draft fiscal study. So I'm just going to watch for lights and make any comments on those issues. I see, ah, Councilmember Fine. I thought maybe we just have no comments?
No, not, not no comments. You're not going to get away with that. Just a high-level thing. I do want to thank staff and our consultants for all the work on this. I know EIRs are a total pain, but it is important for us to go through it. I think they're good benchmarks, and we could all poke holes at any number of the figures in here, whether it's trip reduction numbers, traffic models, housing, population numbers. I don't think that's the point of EIRs. They're meant to kind of lay out a number of scenarios on the spectrum, and I hope, or I guess I want to thank staff. I think they've been very informative for me in kind of considering these different scenarios that we have at hand.
All right. I see no other lights on the comments on this. So Councilmember DuBois? Oh, did you have your light on? Actually, I didn't see your light. I saw you smile.
Yeah.
But if you want to speak, go ahead.
Everybody's playing chicken. I'll go. So just first some comments on the, on the EIR, and then I'll go to the fiscal. So I was at Barron Park Elementary this weekend. Dr. McGee spoke, and I guess there were some recent rankings. You know, Barron Park Elementary has been one of our lower elementary schools. In a recent ranking, actually ranked at number 12 in the state. So Palo Alto Elementary Schools were ranked 1 through 12. Gunn High School was ranked number one in the state. Pretty impressive. So we're a community that's very proud of our schools. This body recently discussed over 3 million, close to 4 million square foot of development. And I bring this up because I'm concerned that the EIR doesn't accurately capture those impacts to our schools. And I did see a couple of letters come in today from the school district, and I think it's just something we need to be aware of. Looked like there was a need potentially for land for eight new schools. I'd also just say, well, as I look at, look at the assumptions, I hope we will take a balanced approach tonight. I think we need to manage growth in a way that pays attention to our, the social impacts, the economic impacts. And we should be asking ourselves, as we look at these scenarios, who do they benefit? You know, we've heard a little bit about kind of affordable housing and serving the disabled. I do, I do, I am concerned that with the current scenario outlined based on the January 30th meeting, without breaks on office development, we may say that we're looking at 6,000 units of housing, but they'll never get built competing with also unfettered office growth. In terms of the transportation element, I'd like to see more teeth in there, and specifically, feedback. I'd like to see us add implementing the county expressway plan. I'm concerned that, again, we're looking at a scenario with a lot of job growth and a lot of housing growth, and none of our transportation elements are dealing with road capacity. You know, and the EIR, there's significant impacts, mostly in the transportation section. If you look at the end, the unavoidable impacts for most all transportation. I'm concerned about Transportation 8 creating demand on our local streets. I think we may even need to consider increasing capacity in our arterials if we're going to keep traffic away from impacting the local streets. And then I'd like to understand, the assumption here is that we're going to have grade crossings. And I'd like to understand the impacts if we don't have grade crossings, or if we only have a subset of grade crossings. It seems to be one of the, really the most major transportation assumption in the list currently. In terms of land use impacts, there were significant impacts for scenarios five and six. And again, we've included some recent changes, like the S cap, but I do think we need to consider future housing in the sphere of influence and the new GUP requests that we're getting. And then quickly on the draft, on the fiscal study, I know the conclusion is it's not really impactful either way. It does seem inconsistent with past analysis that we've done. Were there, we also know that pension is going to be taking a larger and larger piece of the general fund. And so I saw an assumption there that we're not going to decrease service. And I'm wondering how those things were balanced out, or we, it seems like either we have to hire a lot more staff, or we have to have a decrease in service. I'm not sure if this question's coming through properly, but essentially, for a dollar of revenue in the future, a huge chunk of that is going to go to fund pension costs. So it seems like we need either 50% more people, or we deliver much fewer services. Could you guys comment on that?
I'll invite our consultant, Mr. Sigmund, to come to the microphone and offer a response. I'd just say that the fiscal study, like the EIR, looks at one point in time, so it's not really looking at a trend, like you would look at a forecast. It's just in the year 2030, which is the year we're using, what would the impacts be on the general fund, positive or negative? So Ben, do you have something to add?
Sure. Thank you, council. Good to be here tonight. So my firm, Economic and Planning Systems, conducted the study.
If you could pull the mic up a little bit.
Sure. That's easier for me. I think, first off, I just want to point, to the point about inconsistency with past studies, we carefully look forward rather than backward when we're looking at revenue projections. And so we're looking at the marginal contribution of new housing, and the price points that come with that, and the tax revenue that comes with that. And so if you look across Palo Alto today, and you took the average tax revenue, property tax in particular, because of Proposition 13 and other factors, it's, it's not going to necessarily have the same result as what we're finding looking forward. And then concerning costs, just to echo the director's statement, yes, it's a snapshot of today's, or actually the 2015 operating budget. So we're assuming that cost controls where necessary are put in place to rein in anything that might be sort of growing now and looks to be growing in the future. So the pension piece is not explicitly captured. If the expectation is that it's going to grow beyond today's or 2015's as a share of the total operating budget, then those are additional costs that aren't in the study.
Okay. I mean, we certainly have had a lot of forecasts that show that is true. If I could ask you one more question. And so again, we've had projections that pensions are going to take an increasing amount of revenue. The other one is, you know, again, a lot of this seemed to be sensitive to property tax and the turnover of properties, particularly residential. Did you make any assumptions in terms of a shift of rental properties versus, you know, owned properties that might be resold?
The split is fairly similar to what we have here in the city today. We did conduct sensitivity analysis that's documented in the appendix that looks at if turnover rates were to shift upward or downward pretty dramatically, what would be the effect on the findings of the study. And we found the sensitivities to be really modest.
Great. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Koo.
Let me see here. So with regards to the Bay Area Clean Air Plan, I see that it's from 2010, and we measure air quality here based on that plan. Do we have our own thresholds?
Well, we have thresholds of significance. One of them is consistency with the air plan for the region. And we find a significant impact there primarily because it hasn't been updated, and it didn't anticipate what we're doing here with this general plan. So it's just one of several thresholds we use.
So, you know, with the growth in the entire Bay Area, if they haven't updated it, then there is a concern there. Is there any way to address that?
The Bay Area Air Quality Management District, as I understand it, is in the process of updating the Clean Air Plan right now. They have not adopted an update at this time. So that is in process. You know, certainly if it's available at the final EIR, and if staff wants to direct us to look at that, we'd be happy to. And I will just note that the analysis, the, there is also a cumulative quantitative analysis in the air quality chapter that includes development outside of Palo Alto. So it's not only limited to the city.
Yeah, I'm just still very concerned, you know, because it's been six years since they updated it, and we've been growing substantially. So measuring it based on the past numbers just doesn't seem to be right. And I hope that we can get answers to that for this EIR. In terms of the hazardous materials and hazards, you know, I see that the level is not significant. But, you know, I also know that there are issues with hazards and matters that are close to college terrorists. And so I'd like to see that those are some of the things that we are addressing as well, especially contamination that's going underground towards a neighborhood. So I'd like to see that more addressed and not be a low level of significance. You know, as Tom had mentioned about schools, I really do have great concerns that the EIR has not taken into account trying to coordinate the growth of Stanford and growth within PA, and the terms of the impacts. But also, I just want to bring up a development from the past with, which is Arbor Reel. It was estimated that they would have no, it was, it was built based on the assumption that there will be virtually no kids coming out of that development. And that was based on national standards at the time. And as you know, the minute it was built, there were so many kids that did go to our schools and actually overflowed the schools. So I, so I don't want, I mean, what Todd Collins wrote in his letter to us here, it's really important to note that, you know, while you're on this EIR, it's using multifamily apartment unit student generation rate. So we really need to look at that differently and add in the single families and the rest of them.
Councilmember Koo, if it's okay with the mayor, we asked our consultants to prepare a response to that comment letter. Maybe we could just.
Let's go with, let's hear it.
I'll do that now.
Sorry. Thank you. Sure. So the, we did have a chance to take a look at the comments submitted by Todd Collins today regarding impacts to schools. Very much appreciate those comments and having a chance to take a look at them. And I just want to make a, the first point, that we did consult with the school district in preparing the school's analysis, and that's mentioned in the footnotes to a couple of the tables about the student the tables about the student generation rates and the numbers that we used. And one of the important changes that was made between the draft EIR and the supplement was using updated student generation rates that the district had released in the interim. So we did get those numbers straight from the district and applied those to the new development that's anticipated under each one of the scenarios. The district does have both what they call moderate and conservative numbers, and we use the higher of those generation rates. So there are, you know, as Mr. Collins acknowledged, different, they do see different generation rates from different types of projects and different locations, and we defaulted to using the higher assumptions. We did assume that all of the housing development would be multifamily development, and that's really based on the nature of the scenarios and the thought that these are primarily, this housing is going to happen in any of the scenarios as new infill development primarily in locations served by transit. So there could be some replacement, certainly in Palo Alto, of existing single-family units with new single-family units. But I think the majority of net new growth is likely to happen as multifamily units, and that is what we assumed. So that's a correct statement in his comments. In terms of the final impact conclusion, I think there's kind of a perceived concern, which I can certainly understand, that we conclude that the impacts are what the EIR calls less than significant. And that's really a sequoia term of art. In this case, as the EIR explained, what we can say in the EIR for sequoia purposes is really constrained by state statutes that require that the payment of development fees by new development be considered full mitigation of impacts to schools. So although this may not comport with kind of a common sense level, understanding of student generation rates, and those numbers are alarming for when you see how many new students would be generated, even if we were to recalculate those numbers based on a different set of generation rates or different assumptions about the mix of single-family versus multifamily housing due to the way that state law is written, we wouldn't change our finding in the impact, that the impact would be less than significant on schools due to state statutes. So, but that's a little bit of background. I can go into more detail if you have more specific questions.
Maybe I'll just add one or two things. First, as the city manager indicated, we're looking forward to meeting with school district staff and working through some of these questions in the next 10 days to two weeks. Also, we will provide a full written response and analysis of this issue and the issue that was raised by council members about the interplay with the GUP housing and that application in the final EIR. That'll be one of the big responses we provide in that document.
An add in?
If I could just add one other thing, it's something that's been talked about in the past, but, you know, there's certainly going to be the possibility for whether it's actually in mitigations, if it rose to that level, or just policy choices to try to design housing options that actually suppress, if that's what we want to achieve, the impact on schools as far as school-aged children. So, I mean, whether it, we've talked about microhousing or other sorts of units that could support a different demographic. I'm not saying that you would automatically do that, but this idea that there is not going to be policy direction on the type of housing that we're going to build with the concern for the impacts is something that certainly, whether it's 3,000 units or 4,000 or 2,000 or 6,000, I would assure the council will be discussing what the nature of that housing should be.
What type of housing? I guess, in a way, I kind of think, I mean, council doesn't, we're not in the position to build housing, you know? These are private property owners or landowners that are going to come in with their proposals, you know? So at the end of the day, you know, we have to look at worst-case scenario. But also, when you're discussing with the Stanford folks as well as with the school folks, I'd love to also have you bring in the teacher housing, you know? I mean, it's not just students, it's also the teachers. I hope that we can learn from the Stanford medical, the hospital situation where there's no housing provided for their nursing staff, you know? So please take that into consideration as well. In terms of hydrology, on paper, we have plenty of water, right? Palo Alto has a large allocation from Hetch Hetchy, but when we're in a drought, Palo Alto is told to cut back as well. The water allocation is based on every year being a wet year, but we have seen in a drought, we have mandatory cutbacks. So all this water supposedly that we have on paper is just a paper commitment. And so actual allocations will leave us at the mercy of San Francisco and the state. So consequently, water for new residents and companies would come from cutbacks to current residents and companies. So we have to achieve much in terms of conservation of water, and I'm concerned about whether the additional measures would generate enough savings to accommodate the proposed levels of growth. And I hope the EIR can take this into consideration as well. Now, with regards to transportation, so there is some optimism in terms of funding for Caltrain electrification because my colleagues came back from Washington, D.C., and said that they had some good talks with some of the senators and so forth over there, the bigwigs. But has the ERR taken into consideration the worst-case scenario, which means that we're not getting the funding for the next four to eight years? You know why. Also, I would love to see discussion in, with the Stanford folks for a comprehensive bike pad, pedestrian bicycle pathway that is east to west or west to east, but basically from the campus to the ballpark trails. So that's another thing to discuss. Oh, and also what the impacts and the studies of the ADUs and the JADUs that Councilmember Holman had brought up earlier, I would really like to see that analyzed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ness.
So, let me ask about schools first, because Eric, you and I were at a school, city school meeting about a month ago. I couldn't go last week, but we had a direct discussion about projections of enrollment. Am I correct? And my recollection was-
We did, and we had another one last week, too.
Yeah, we heard nothing of this sort. In fact, we asked directly, and I frequently ask, because as a former school board member, I'm always interested in the demographics. I was here when it went down to 7,000, and, you know, apparently sometime preceding me, it was at 17,000. Huge numbers. But right now, my recollection, and I'll look at Penny, is about 12,000. So at that number, I hear you saying, yes, you're going to go and talk with whomever in the next couple of weeks. But unless there is something very substantial, we haven't seen anything official in writing whatsoever yet, including from Stanford, unless I'm mistaken. Am I mistaken, especially about the GUP? Because I recall discussing that with Jean McCowan, among others, and the anticipation was not alarming as far as needing future schools.
Well, there were a few questions there. First, I anticipate that we will get formal comments from the school district and from Stanford, and we look forward to those comments, and we'll include them with responses in the final EIR. I think the school district did send a letter to Stanford on the GUP about this concern, about the need for additional schools, and the school district transmitted a copy of that to us just today. So they did put something in writing about that.
That was in our packet?
I believe it was one of the many, many emails that came in today.
That came today. It makes it so hard when they come in and someone says, didn't you see it? I sent it two hours ago. So what I'm hearing you say is, yes, you're going to look into that, but nothing I have heard so far really raised any alarms. Just to say that nothing up until this point tonight.
Yeah. As Joanna indicated, we did consult with the school district in preparing the analysis. We feel like the analysis is solid, and we're happy to have additional conversations with them about, you know, what it means for them, what they think of these conclusions, and also the issue of how it interacts with the GUP. We're happy to have those conversations.
I'm somewhat concerned, because we went through a number of years where we heard that the enrollment was growing, and then suddenly, and I think it was Todd Collins who said to me, actually, it hasn't been growing, it's been going down. So something out there is the truth, and that's what we, I think, we don't have tonight. And I think what you're saying, Hillary, is that will be delivered to us, correct? So, something else, just to pause for a minute on the fiscal, and I am, the general fund revenues at 426, and looking at our assessed value in Palo Alto over the last few years, and I'm so glad Jim is back, because it looks to me, Jim, like it's grown dramatically. Am I correct? I'm looking at assessed value, and I'm on-
Oh, yes, significantly.
428. I don't know what that portends for us in the future, but I think, as I recall, we're still, we're still the city that has the highest per capita rate in our county of what we spend on our citizens, correct? We have more services, we have more, we have more parks, we have more of almost anything we can offer. And I think it's really important to point that out. Bob Moss still here, because Bob usually mentions things like this, and that is what it costs per person. And my recollection is, do we, 2,200 a year? Does that sound about right? Somewhere in that range. And so it was interesting to hear that new residents actually brought in more revenue than anyone else in our community, office workers, whatever. And I think, is that new, or was it just new to me?
I'm going to leave that up to-
Is that standard in most communities?
We can ask Mr. Sigmund to address that if he can.
I think it's a challenging question to answer if I-
Well, that's just where I meant it to be, of course.
Okay, very good. So we base the revenue calculations on the specific assumptions related to growth in the city. As was mentioned, it's multifamily housing. We put price points on the market rate. We also look at the HUD standards for below-market rate housing and price those units based on that. That's where the property tax comes from. We have household spending surveys that we use for each household to determine how much they're going to put into retail businesses here in town, so that's where that revenue figure comes from. So is there something specific I can respond to?
I don't think any more than that.
Okay.
I think mine is a reflection, as much as anything, in acknowledgement of what it really does take to keep this city running.
Very good. Thanks.
Could I just add something to that? I would just say that this is probably the kind of thing that, I mean, even after the plan is adopted, that as we look at this, that we would periodically update, because it's certainly subject to change. And I think there are a lot of other factors that we don't put into all of this. I mean, we don't exist in an island. The growth that takes place around us has an impact on our city and our costs. Just the other day, we had a big police chase that was involving folks from out of town. The idea that everybody is adding offices around us and building more housing and to think that that isn't going to have a cost impact on us is just false.
It is time for that wall, right?
Well, no, but the point, the point here is, it's a much more dynamic situation and environment on the costs and the funding for things.
And one last comment, because again, Councilmember Coop brought it up. We did spend an odd amount of time in Washington a week ago discussing electrification, because electrification has very much to do with high-speed rail and whether or not that gets funded. We also heard something that I wouldn't normally say out loud, but it was very discouraging, which is in many offices, it's acknowledged that we are currently with an ABC administration in D.C., which, as you probably know, stands for anything but California. So there's a great deal of antipathy toward us, which is, mostly, I think, we're pretty nice people. I was really kind of saddened by that. And it does mean, I mean, we're a donor state, and this indicates that we will get certainly less than what I think is our rightful amount. So as we look at our, coming back again to this, our fiscal analysis, we have to look at what's going on not only in neighboring cities but across the country. And if we look at something very specific like Caltrain, we may be looking at, this may not get funded through federal funds, and as I said, that's very disappointing. I'm done.
All right. Councilmember Holman.
Okay, good. Thank you. A lot of comments have been made about school impacts. I won't repeat those, other than to say, in addition to the impacts on the schools themselves, they also imply traffic impacts and additional costs, which, to this point in time, the city incurs, as opposed to the school district, like crossing guards and any number of other things that we cover, the city covers. So when looking at the impacts on schools, please consider those other aspects of it. I do, so a question about the prior Stanford GUP. So during an EIR, you're looking at existing conditions, but they have 750,000 square feet that still hasn't been built from the prior GUP. Was that, I couldn't tell, was that considered in analyzing this, these scenarios?
It would have been considered in the projected future, kind of, background growth between now and 2030.
Okay. So I guess I'll just put this out there. So I, I know you're, I know that the, what's required is to look at existing conditions and what's foreseen. But I agree with a couple of others who've mentioned the new Stanford GUP. I just don't know how we can ignore that there's three or four million square feet likely to come as a result of the newly proposed Stanford GUP. I just don't know how we can, I just don't know how we can possibly ignore that and not account for it.
Yeah. We will absolutely respond to that concern. I've heard it from any number of speakers this evening, and we'll provide a full response in our final document.
Okay. Appreciate that. And also, I brought this up earlier, and I appreciate the staff response, but I'm going to push on this, is like, as I heard at least one of the councilmembers say, the ADU ordinance that the council's passed, I think that could have the potential of a very significant impact, depending on who takes up the banner. You know, we don't, we can't anticipate that. All we can know is, here's how the zoning has changed. And that zoning change is what we have to analyze and potential impacts. One other one that the council has done a little bit inconsistently in one place, and I've forgotten, I was reading a lot. One place, the council had voted to consider increasing hotel floor area ratio from two to three, and then two to three in the downtown area and two to two and a half in the outside downtown areas. And that's, that was a consider at one point in time, and then it actually got passed recently. I don't know that there's going to be enough of that to have an impact, but I leave that to staff. In the various scenarios, there are references to significant impacts having to do with noise, cultural resources. Both of those were significant, and I'll come back to those in just a moment. And my comments here are going to go back and forth a little bit between the EIR and the fiscal analysis, if that's okay? Is that agreeable? Okay. So, having to do with, so the fiscal analysis talks about, you know, current services. But our current services, as great as they are in so many different ways, they're also really lacking and strained in other areas. Last year, we had to, you know, scratch and claw our way to getting our tree maintenance contracts into the level of frequency that's recommended. We have a lot of issues with code enforcement currently, whether it is noise, construction approval, compliance, whether it is damage to trees, whether it is traffic enforcement. We don't have the police to do traffic enforcement. We don't have, apparently, enough code enforcement persons to adequately address occupancy and use violations. apparently enough code enforcement persons to adequately address occupancy and use violations. So, I guess when it comes to the fiscal analysis, I guess I'm not kinda okay with our current level of services, and I'm not sure that that's what we ought to be striving to achieve going forward, because there're gonna be impacts, those impacts are gonna continue, we suffer them now, why would we want to be satisfied with the level of service that we're getting now in some of those areas that require, quite frankly, more, more financial resources? One of the notes, and just, it's so much, it's a lot of material, and I don't remember where it was, actually, maybe it was even repeated in the presentation tonight about how there's not a conditional use permit to regulate employee density. Perhaps we ought to do that, because it's directly related to, directly related to demand on city services, it's directly related to traffic, it's, I don't need to, I don't need to expand on those, because we've done our analyses on four per thousand, and we know that in a great number of cases, it's not four per thousand, and we're kidding ourselves that we think it is. Other councilmembers have mentioned too great a reliance, members of the public did as well, too great a reliance on a TMA that is not only unfunded, for the most part, to this point in time, it's not even proven itself to be, you know, we're hopeful, but to this point in time, I don't think we rely on it like, hey, here's our solution. I just don't think we can do that. TDM, if we're gonna rely on TDM, obviously, they have to be enforceable TDMs, and here's what, whether it's TMA or TDM, whatever we add in terms of, of a workforce, you know, if it's a 30% reduction in trips, there's still the 70% that's, you know, traveling by other means that aren't, aren't public transit, or carpool, or whatever you wanna, however you wanna address that. The physical character, some of the scenarios also talk about considerable changes that could occur to the physical character of, of the town. It's another reason why I want the ADU, ADU, recently adopted ordinance to change, because there's a lot of that that I think could have a quite significant effect on the physical character. Member of the public mentioned something about, one or two members of the public talked about housing units and for whom, I think that is a really good point. That could affect both the economics and the environmental impacts. And let me see if I've covered most of my comments. Another one, and I do appreciate, oh, you are still here, Gilfriend sent an email, and I apologize, it seems like I'm just running from one thing to the next those last weeks. So, I apologize, I have not responded to it, thank you for your email regarding embodied energy, I appreciate that very much. And while it isn't a requirement, I do still wish that the city would be responsible and proactive in looking at the embodied energy in existing buildings and what it takes to build, construct new buildings. And it goes a little bit beyond, it's more in the LEED category, L-E-E-D category, it's, it's not just the embodied energy, but it's also the energy it takes to recycle materials and the energy it takes to produce the new construction materials and transport them to the, to the site, because the last, the last time I read it, it's like, before a construction product gets from the manufacturing site to the construction site, it's, it's transported seven times. These are not insignificant, and I don't wanna make you regret what you put in your email, Mr. Friend, but, but if this, if the city even looks at its, its purchasing practices, its greenhouse gas impacts go up quite a bit, too. So, I think those are things that we all need to, need to consider, we can't just, we cannot afford to bury our hands in the sand anymore about those kinds of things. And I guess, overall, when looking at jobs, we need to be realistic, like I say, the number of jobs, I don't think, I don't think we need to be encouraging of more office, office workers, and when it comes to housing, it's, it's what, what we want and what we can do realistically are not necessarily the same thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be quick. I'm just taken by the fact that we are talking about future growth scenarios for Palo Alto, and the main thing we're focused on is impacts, and I wonder if we can step back for a moment and flip that on its head, because in some ways, growth is also a benefit. When we were at this conference, the National League of Cities last week, a few of us were joking that the, the sessions on economic development were packed, and I mean, filled up with people from Mississippi and Maine and Pennsylvania and parts of central California and Washington State, and us Palo Altons and our friends in Menlo Park and Mountain View just laughed them off. That's a privileged place to be, and we shouldn't cook our golden goose. I completely agree with Councilmember Holman that there is concern about office growth in the city, and we need to do it smartly in a way that supports our community, but we shouldn't be cutting off future job growth and development because we rely on it. As a third-year-old in this community, I hope there are jobs for me here in the future, and I would hate to see us restrict those opportunities, because I do think it's important to our community and to our residents. Second, on the issue of housing, yes, housing has impacts, so do current residents, but there're also enormous benefits of housing. The benefits of housing include opportunities to access jobs and schools, accessibility for people of different abilities or disabilities, new housing in the right places, smart growth is the sustainable option going forward. Finally, it contributes to a vibrant, inclusive, and multi-generational community, a diversity of students to fill our schools, and ways to support longtime residents, renters, and seniors who might otherwise be displaced. In a funny way, the primary benefit of housing is the housing itself and the families which will live in it. So, let's keep that in mind, too. I wish our EIR could measure those things, I know we can't, but maybe next round.
Thank you. Councilmember Roba.
So, there've been a couple of concerns that have been raised, let me first say that I agree with almost everything that Councilmember Fine just said. Yeah, anyway, but there've been a couple of concerns that were raised, I do wanna actually provide my take on them. When it comes to water use, new development and infill development tends to have much more efficient water use than most current structures and developments, same thing with energy use. On the question of schools, I really appreciate the responses from staff and also from the consultants to the letter, which I found quite puzzling, from School Board Member Collins, certainly on the City School Liaison Committee, which I was on with Councilmember DuBois last year, the issue of this comp plan, the growth scenarios, the EIR, potential for impact on schools, came up quite clearly, and it was clearly discussed. If the school board has not yet agendized a discussion about that, that is not our responsibility, but something that they need to do. I'm glad to hear that staff will continue the collaboration they've already done, and are looking forward in the next fortnight to working with the school district staff again. I'm glad to hear that the numbers that we're using for our projections of how many students will be associated with new housing are the numbers, in fact, the, the higher numbers that we got from the school district themselves. For those who are concerned that, you know, that future development will be like previous development in that it, you know, was not all small units, well, that's the reason we need to emphasize having more small units. I, I agree with that, that should be our priority, I think that we've all been really clear, and the public's been clear, that future development of housing in Palo Alto ought to focus on smaller places, which, even according to the school district, is less likely to create a large impact on the schools. For those who are concerned that, that we do not have enough school sites, it is certainly unfortunate that the school sold off or leased off many of its sites many years ago, but that doesn't mean that we can't work together, put our heads together, and find future new school sites, if that does become a necessity. You know, and I think one of the ways to do that is through coordinated area plans, where you could incorporate a school site along with new housing, you know, places like Fries or even potentially the Stanford Research Park in the future, those are options that we ought to explore, and the, the phrasing and the policies and the programs in this comprehensive plan point us in that direction and enable us to have those conversations so that future housing development, along with schools and park space, can all go together. You know, it, back in the fall, you know, there was an email I saw from, somebody forwarded to me from Councilmember, sorry, from School Board Member Collins, where he said, you know, you can, you can potentially turn it around, instead of more housing being a threat to the schools, you can make demographic hollowing out, which is what they call it in the Rust Belt cities, a threat. The kindergarten enrollment decline is a good stat for that. So, you know, even, you know, School Board Member Collins has indicated that there's a, you know, a real danger from, from, you know, as he said, people may say lower enrollment is okay, but if you play it out, we end up losing our identity as a family-oriented, school-centric community. And though there is, you know, a preference to have more folks being able to actually live in Palo Alto, those who are already part of our community being able to actually, you know, sleep here at night, the impact to the schools, you know, expressed in School Board Member Collins' letter, I, I would call hyperbolic and inaccurate.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, most of, most of my concerns or comments are sort of already, already been hit by multiple people. I think, just briefly, I, you know, I'm really glad that the EIR is going the direction it is, and I'm really, really glad that it's broader than sort of, I mean, when we first said we were gonna do this many months ago, I was like, yeah, EIR is really, but, but yeah, because I think it's broadened beyond sort of air quality and water quality to a lot of things that people in town really care about, that even though they don't fit the sort of classical profile of an environmental impact report, right? And I think that's good, 'cause at the end of the day, you know, we all gotta be asking the question, you know, the things we do, particularly with a comp plan, where, you know, it's so long-term, right? You know, why is this good for Palo Alto residents? Okay? And I think the EIR, you know, is, we're covering a lot of that, and so I think that, that's a good thing. Let's see, the, you know, the school thing. I'm really glad that the school, school board and the school district is, the communication lines are open, I think that's really important. I think, you know, I think we haven't been as close with those guys on, on this kind of stuff, for whatever reason, in the past, and I'm really glad to see this happening. I mean, they're, they're weighing in on the Stanford GOP expansion, you know? Some of the scenarios in our expansion are much, much bigger than the Stanford GOP expansion, so they should weigh in on, on that, on that, too, right? And I think, you know, this, in this town, I mean, I mean, the city council elections are kind of the undercard to school board elections, and so, I think, I think, I think that's a really good thing. So, glad to, glad to see that the loop closed and active dialogue. The one thing I would say about the EIR is that, and Todd Collins, who's, you know, is member of the Enrollment Committee and so forth, points out in his letter, the EIR uses K to six, and seven and eight, and nine to 12, and the school board uses, the school district uses K to five, six, seven, and eight, so that, if that could get rationalized, that'd be great. Yeah, and I think, you know, I think the, I'm glad that the time period's still open and so forth, but, you know, I know the, the, yeah, maybe I'll comment on it later, thanks.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So, I've, I've been looking at the different scenarios and thinking about it, and looking at page, packet page 418, the different scenarios, the financial estimation, and one way to think about, you know, which, which is the right scenario for us, is to look at it through the financial lens. I've heard that the city is forecast to have a deficit of around $6 million, and one thing that a lot of residents like about the city is the services that it delivers. As Vice Chair mentioned, Palo Alto probably spends more per resident than just by any other city, and I think that's one of the things that makes the city really, really nice, is we take care of our residents. Now, to do that, it takes money, though. So, so I was looking at figure two on packet page 418, and trying to figure out, well, which one, which one of these scenarios brings in the most money, right, net money? And, so I just wanna make sure I understand this. So, if I look at this, in terms of net income to the city, scenario four is number one, followed by scenario number six, then scenario number three. Is, am I looking this right? Is this, is this the way to think about it, or am I missing something here?
I'm sorry, you're on page...
Packet page 418.
418, okay.
So, I'm just, I'm just looking at figure two, total net effect, which is, I assume, kinda like, basically, net income to the city, so to speak, for different scenarios. And it looks like, if you, if you look at, just purely from a fiscal lens, that, you know, with, with, with the, with the idea in mind that one way to benefit the residents is to make sure that the services that we have can be paid for, and thus, having revenue or net revenue. And so, it looks like four is first, followed by six, then by three. Is that, is that the right way of interpreting this? Or am I missing something?
Yeah, I think you're looking at this right, although I would, you know, step back from drawing conclusions about these really tiny differences between the scenarios, I think we interpret this study as showing that there would not be negative consequences from the growth that's projected.
But these aren't, aren't tiny differences, you're looking at...
They're projecting a slight increase.
Well, no, you're looking at differences like scenario one is, you know, 5,000 to 7,400, that's, that's a pretty big spread, that's a spread of, what, 40% right there? That's not a small difference. That's not a few percentage difference, that's a massive difference. So, that's why I'm asking, is it, is this right?
Maybe Mr. Sigmund can speak to that again.
All right, thank you. So, I wanna just echo the, the Director's comment, while there's a significant percentage difference between the, the net findings, that, the, in that figure, and I have the one from our full report, I'm not sure if this, the report you're looking at is exactly the same, but these are relatively small percentages of your operating budget, right? And so, while the, the differential is notable, and it's good that we can see some difference between the, the scenarios, I, I would definitely urge some caution. We, what we do when we do these studies is create as, as close to an experiment around a comp plan like this that we can, so we hold everything constant and look at just essentially your operations today through the lens of a new land use program that would occur in the city over the, the next 15 or so years. And so, it's, it's stylized, right? It's stylized for analysis, it's stylized to pull out the differences between scenarios, and so I think that's what you're showing. What we find is that the, the public, the, the local government here in Palo Alto is sort of, has achieved critical mass, it's, it's stabilized, and that you can continue to grow without, without a lot of additional draw on, from a cost perspective, and so, we do see benefit from adding residential uses, we do see net fiscal benefit from adding commercial uses, and yes, at the end of the day, we do find scenario four, really the most significant growth scenario, to have the most significant net fiscal effect.
Okay, so, the only thing that, that kinda bothers me, though, is, I remember kinda during the recession here in Palo Alto, and we did have a recession, and rents did drop, and housing prices did drop, is that, is that, I remember a, a report from the city manager, I think it was actually one of that, at one of the city council retreats, where you kinda looked at the different uses of land, and which one, which one made money for the city, which one lost money for the city. And I remember you had a chart, and I was looking for it on my computer, I cannot find it right now, so I might be getting this wrong, but it was like hotels got, was number one use, like net revenue to the city, followed by retail, followed by office, and then housing. And I remember, like, office and housing being slightly negative, and I, I was wondering if the city manager happens to remember that slide, or can speak more about it. I think something, that's a question that the Vice Mayor was asked, kind of asking a little bit earlier, I think.
I don't know that I remember exactly that slide, but again, I mean, those, in this case, for the most part, we're just talking about sort of the financial impact of these different uses, so I think generally those sorts of uses are accurate. All right. Go on. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Was there more to your question?
Well, no, I, I guess I, I'm just trying to think of, of that slide, and I, I kept it somewhere, but I can't find it right now, and so, my question is more about, like, is this really right or not? Because, in that analysis I remember seeing earlier, it was, it showed housing actually being negative, and that's why I'm questioning, is this right or not?
Well, I mean, there are different factors, I mean, I think that the, the analysis that we've done isn't necessarily the full cost of, to the commi- of, to the community of different uses, right, at times. So, I mean, there's different ways this has been sliced. I'm guessing that. I mean, I think the housing numbers that we have are based upon the impact on the city's operations and costs. It doesn't deal with other costs that can accrue in the community or benefits, correct? So, I mean, you know, I mean, there's, this can get to be an involved, you know, multi-dimensional conversation, really.
And Councilmember Tanaka, it was precisely because of past studies and thoughts, such as those you've been referring to, that we asked EPS to undertake a study with regard to this comp plan. And they looked specifically at this issue of the impacts of growth on the general fund. And maybe Ben can comment further.
Yeah, I'd love to just add one comment. So, a lot of these studies depend on how you assign revenues and costs, right? And so there have certainly been past studies, I'm not sure, you know, if it was the city manager's slide or not, but here in Palo Alto that attributed, for instance, all retail sales to commercial uses, or attributed all hotel uses, all hotel TOT, transient occupancy tax, to commercial use. And what we were asked to do when we, we put the methodology for this study together was to actually trace back those revenues to their driver. So, in some instances, it's, it's households from the city here that are making retail purchases, and we assume that that revenue, that retail sales revenue is attributable to households, so the, the residential land use. And same goes for hotel. There's some element of the TOT revenue that we attribute to households, because when friends and relatives come to visit residents of town, that TOT revenue is attributed to having households here. So it's a methodology that we crafted around the issues in Palo Alto and the questions the council was asking at the time. And it's not as simple as some studies, which just look at the revenues, sort of, you know, first point of entry.
Well, I guess I just want to make sure that this is comprehensive, right? This is including all the cost and all the revenue, and that we're not missing something here. And if it is, that's great, this is good, right? All the more positive. But it is, it's different from what I remember before, and that's why I'm questioning it.
Are you done? Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I guess I, a couple of things. First of all, I also wanted to say that I thought the EIR and the draft EIR, you know, the supplemental part, were really done well, and that they dealt with all of the issues, for the most part. In fact, I couldn't think of any ones you didn't deal with. So I thought you did an excellent job on that. I think the EIR is well-done and well-crafted, and I think I would associate my comments in some ways with Councilmember Phil Seth, who talked about how I thought it was great that we went through all of these different things. In fact, I thought we were far more in-depth and thoughtful than a lot of EIRs I'd read. And so I want to tell staff I thought it was great. On the fiscal analysis, I also have a huge cognitive dissonance over the, over the fiscal, fiscal analysis and what I believe to be true. And when I look through the, here, when I look through the fiscal analysis itself, for instance, you know, basically you take public safety, which is probably our most expensive department, and 70% of that is allocated towards employment, because most of the stuff that we have goes on downtown. Well, that's not the office buildings. That's basically because we have bars and restaurants downtown, and people get drunk on a Friday and Saturday night, and those kind of things. So, I think by just allocating stuff like that, it seems to me that we skew the whole, the way this works. And so, you know, what I took out of this is really more high-level, that, you know, when we do this on any of the scenarios, it's not going to break the city one way or the other, or it's not going to make us a lot of money either way. I actually think that if we, if it was really that important, we would spend the time on it, and I actually would have lots of questions for the consultant, you know, like, really? Public safety, 70% downtown, because it's retail? You know, other things that come to mind are that the amount of sales tax we generate in the research park is equal to the amount of sales tax we generate downtown. And given that's true, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to me to say that new jobs create less than new residences. The other thing I saw in here, and I'd love to look at the numbers they used, is they were valuing commercial, a new office building at worth less per square foot than a new residence. That's just not simply true. I know it's not true. And so, I don't know where that data came from, but I think it's wrong. And that skews the whole thing on the property taxes, which is what drives these numbers. And I think what that does is it drives it to look the way it does, and give people the view that this is not really accurate. But at the end of the day, I would say, it actually probably doesn't matter that much, and it's not worth the effort to, to go through it. With that said, I just wanted to say that I thought, as I said, the EIR was well-done, and I think we're on to a good start, and appreciate all the staff effort on this.
I had a quick question.
Quick?
Yes.
Really quick.
So, all those comments, are those going to be considered part of the EIR, or we don't need a motion, right?
No, we don't need any motions.
Yeah, the, the EIR, the comments related to EIR will be in the final EIR and responded to there. The comments on the fiscal study we'll respond to separately.
All right. Getting, we may actually get out of here before 1:00 tonight. We're doing a fairly decent job.
So, so you've dealt with number four, number one, and number two, correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct. So now we're going to basically come back to, to item number three, which is identify the preferred scenario for the final ER, based on the city council's January 30th, 2017, direction regarding the land use and community design element, as it appears to, okay, fine enough. So, you know, I'm just going to basically start this out with a motion, so that we can have something to talk about. So, I did send it to staff. So I'm going to basically move that we accept the staff's description of a preferred scenario for the final EIR with the following elements and adjustments. That estimated housing growth would be between scenario five, which is 35, 45 dwelling units, and scenario four, 4,420 dwelling units. B, that we have an estimated non-residential square footage would be similar to scenario two, 3 million square feet, of which 1.3 million has already been approved at SUMC. And the estimated employment growth C would be between scenario two, 9,850 jobs, and 11,500 jobs. D, the transportation investments would be those listed in the staff report, subject to additional review and refinement, when the transportation element returns to the council on May 1st. And E, additional zoning code amendments and policies advancing sustainability measures would be those listed in the staff report, subject to additional review and refinement, when the land use element returns to the council on May 1st. I'll speak.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
I did.
Can we see that?
Yeah.
Oh, just now, is that, okay.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, did, did you modify the recommendation of under A from the staff?
I did.
Because, pardon me?
I did.
Okay, good. Just checking.
I did recommend it. So I'm, I'm going to briefly speak to it. So, I think it's important that we take a moderate and balanced approach to this. And I think that when looking at the housing numbers, and looking at historical growth rates, and looking at our schools, and looking at a lot of that, what we're doing by going from the 35, 45 to 4,420 on this, is we are saying to the community, we want more housing. We want to make room for more people in our community. Our traditional growth rate would be, I don't have in front of me, so I'm self-talking, it was the 2970, it was the business usual number, which was that. That's significantly smaller than the 35, 45, and the 4,000, 420 number. And I think it has to be a range. I think it depends on where we go, it depends on what we get, and I think that's more appropriate than choosing an arbitrary number on that, because in reality, I don't think these things are as precise that we should choose one number. I'd also point out that this is basically the EIR. These numbers do not go into the comp plan. That this is basically an EIR that justifies the comp plan according to state law. So I also think it's really important to have numbers that are accurate and that make some sense. And that's how I got there on the job numbers. You know, I've heard from staff over and over again that anything less than 9,850 jobs probably doesn't make much sense. And I think what we want to do is we want to have not a huge job growth. So I think anything, I think 11,500 jobs on the outer limit there makes some sense in terms of showing that we're not pushing job growth, we're pushing housing growth on this, but we are not going crazy on either housing or jobs, and we're taking a balanced approach to it. On D and E, this is really so that we get out of here tonight. What I was really saying to my council colleagues on this is, these elements are returning under both D and E on May 1st, and we'll have an entire council meeting, and possibly more council meetings, frankly, on those issues, to talk about the items set forth in D and E. So you don't need to spend a lot of time tonight saying, you know, we want to change this or change that, because we're going to have a separate council meeting to go through those items. So that was the purpose of, of putting in D and E like that, and I think that covers all what staff needs. And I just wanted to confirm with staff that we've covered, if the motion passes, what you need tonight.
Yeah, and I would just add, Mr. Mayor, under D and E, what we have put in here was material that was presented to the council on January 30th, or comments, as we heard from the council. So the count, your, your suggestion of being able to take it up on May 1st would be to correct if there were some nuances or issues we didn't get right.
Right, that's what I was thinking. I didn't want council colleagues to think that by voting for this, that they're locking in stone anything in D and E, if for reasons they have issues with it, and that we will have a full discussion of it, and everyone will have an opportunity to weigh in, and we may in fact have more than one meeting on it on May 1st, depending on how those elements go. So with that, Councilmember Phil Seth, would you like to talk to your second?
Yeah, maybe I'll talk for a minute here. You know, I wanted to see the, I passed out this, passed out this chart, which I, Hillary was very patient with me last night on this. But I wanted to see the, the scenario growth rates relative to historical growth rates, right? Because we are talking about long-term stuff, and this is the long-term. And I think Palo Alto has generally done a very good job over the years, balancing between a purely residential suburb like Saratoga or Woodside versus a crowded urban city like downtown San Francisco, for example, or some of the other cities in the Bay Area. We've got both the family neighborhoods, and the trees, and the good suburban schools, and the parks and open spaces, but we've also got this dynamic tech innovation economy of the research park and the downtown core. I think Councilmember Fine called it the golden goose, right? Which is as dynamic as anywhere in the country, but still without a lot of the urban ills, and sort of the city manager mentioned some of that earlier, right, the actions we saw this week that you see from a lot of other areas. So, like the rest of the Bay Area, we are straining a little now under some of the challenges like traffic and parking, and obviously housing cost, right? But overall, I think we've done as well at that balance as any city in the area, and maybe even the country, right? And as somebody mentioned earlier, a lot of people with, a lot of other cities would like to be where we are. Now, would everybody in Palo Alto like to have this, and also have no traffic, easy parking everywhere, all the dog parks and playing fields you can possibly imagine, and housing that everybody can afford who wants to live here? Of course, okay? But it's not going to happen. And what I think most people want is for us to keep this balance, okay? I think most people don't want to be Atherton, and they don't want to be the Mission District either, right? I think they want to stay on this, I want to, I think they want to stay on this trend, and I think this is kind of what the motion we have on the table does, consistent with history, okay? Now, I know there are people in town who value new housing so much that a lot of the other things, you know, are of secondary importance or so forth, but I think that this is what most people want. I think most people want us to grow housing moderately, you know, to throttle back on massive job growth, and, and yet continue to be good stewards of the balance we've developed. And so I think this motion does that. Thanks.
Councilmember Walbach.
So I appreciate the, the desire by the maker and the seconder of the motion to pursue reasonable balance, and to try and decipher, you know, what most Palaltons want. I think that we know what most Palaltons want. We've seen it in our polling, it was commissioned by the city last year, we saw in the results in November, Palaltons want more housing. I don't think that rapid housing growth indefinitely into the future would be sustainable necessarily, but I do think that we have a critical need in the next few years to really address our jobs-housing imbalance, to make up for historical deficits, and that this comprehensive plan is the opportunity to do that, to right our wrongs, right, to clean up our mess, and to be a good steward to our region, and enjoy the benefits to our community of having that kind of balance. Scenario six is the only one that gets us under, you know, at 2.9 jobs-housing imbalance. You know, we talked about, you know, some people talked about going to 10,000 new housing units for this comprehensive plan last year. I suggested the time 8,000, did not get support. We settled on, you know, this is in talking about what we could at least study, which is really what we're talking about tonight as well, is, you know, what's the preferred scenario for the EIR, not the comp plan itself. You know, we ended up settling on something that I thought was a disappointing compromise of a maximum study of 6,000 housing units for the duration of this comp plan in the EIR. That was what we decided last year. I was very disappointed by that. A lot of people in the community were disappointed by that, but I made my peace with that. And a lot of us did as well. And the proposal here does not capture that. This then throttles back on what was already a very severe compromise, especially when you compare us to some of our neighboring comparable cities. A lot of people who spoke tonight talked about Mountain View having a plan for 10,000 new housing units in the North Bay Shore area. So that would be, you know, the equivalent of us considering 10,000 housing units in the Stanford Research Park. That does not include the other housing that Mountain View is looking at in a variety of other neighborhoods, which are probably about double that in total, or nearly double in total. Mountain View is growing by, what, like 50%? This is, you know, I'm not saying we need to copy Mountain View, but again, a 6,000 housing unit growth to be studied in the IR was the compromise, and I don't think this does service to that. I am surprised to hear reference to things having been going pretty well in Palo Alto. I don't think things have been going pretty well in Palo Alto. Whatever, wherever you point the fingers, I don't think most people in Palo Alto think things have been going pretty well. We've differed about what the solutions are, but I think a lot of us came to this council because we thought things needed to change. And to decide now that we want to stay the course with something pretty close to how things are going is not the kind of turning around the Titanic that we've been talking about for a few years. So I'd like to offer an amendment, I don't think it'll be friendly, but I'd like to offer it, that we, you know, for part A, that we change that to between scenario four, which is the 4,420 dwelling units, and scenario six, which is 6,000 housing units. I hope it'll be friendly, and I'll wait to see the response.
No, it's not friendly.
I'll make it as a, as an amendment then, and hope I'll have a second for it. So I think I've, I've spoken to it enough, so I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Fine, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Sure. Just to reiterate, Councilmember Walbach, housing is the number one concern in this community. Palo Alto, for decades, has not pulled its weight here. Here's an opportunity for us to show some leadership, make moderate changes in our community, support our environmental goals through the SCAP in terms of smart growth near transit and jobs. I also want to mention, as, as the motion stands, 3,500 to, sorry, 4,400, and 9,800 to 11,000, that's still a, a jobs-housing ratio of three to one. So we're not really making a dent in the problem which our residents are worried about. Yes, we can moderate job growth, we can also build more housing, that begins to address that gap. I don't think the limit of 4,400 really begins to do that. And we've heard from hundreds of residents that housing is their number one concern, housing types are of concern to them, housing prices are of concern to them. I just don't think moderation is the way to go on this, and I don't actually believe that 6,000 is illegitimate or going too far. Mountain View is doing 10,000, Menlo Park is looking at similarly big numbers, and they're half our size. You know, I'd, I'd like to see Palo Alto be a leader on this, on, on housing particularly.
I'm just going to correct you, because it's actually, Mountain View is doing 15,000, Sunnyville is doing 10,000. Sunnyvale is doing 10.
Sunnyvale is doing 10, Mountain View is doing 15, and Menlo Park is doing, I think slightly below 10.
All right, Councilmember DuBois, do you, you want to speak to this? You don't have to.
I had my light on for the original motion.
Okay, so I'm going to actually clear the board, and just put your lights on if you want to speak to the amendment. Councilmember Niss? Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Niss.
I think the reason this is so important is that for those of us who ran last fall, the only issue was housing, was nothing else. It was housing, housing, and more housing. Sometimes it was affordable housing, sometimes it was micro-units, but there was absolutely no question that it was about housing. I'm not sure we've got to go tit-for-tat with other cities, I don't think that's really the point. I think though that we're making a long-term plan tonight that I know is going to be for 15 years, no matter what we may say. This is supposed to be till 2030, no matter what, it's going to run probably till 2035. And this is about the future, this is about those who are going to move here in the future. And somebody said it earlier tonight, I don't remember who. They talked about diverse housing for a diverse group and a diverse community. And I heard that many times during the election, that diversity issue. You need housing for, as somebody came earlier tonight, the developmentally disabled. You need housing for those who are aging and would like to age in place but still want to have their kids involved. I think what this does is give us a flexible number that we can aim for. I'm not sure there'd be support for it, but I think that this is a laudable number that we could aim for tonight.
Councilmember Koo.
Sorry. I just want to state that, you know, I agree with you and Councilmember Phil Seth that we want to do a balanced approach moving forward in terms of growth here in Palo Alto. And so I would like to ask that you consider the Stanford's numbers, you know, in terms of their population growth that will have effect on Palo Alto itself. So if I may, make a friendly amendment.
So we are actually talking about the amendment? Are you going to amend the amendment?
Oh, I'm so sorry. No, I'm not amending his amendment. I don't, no.
Fair enough. Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I, you know, I said earlier, it's like, you know, there's a difference between what we want and what we can do. And I think actually when it comes to this number, the original motion cut it closer to right, not that there is a perfect, there's not. You know, we had a lot of comments, you know, yes, we've heard from a lot of people who say like, you know, go big on housing. We also have a lot of people who have commented and responded to the citizen survey, talk about, you know, the, the physical effect, the built environment. And we haven't seen to this point in time any drawings, any scope that show like what this kind of development would look like, unless I've overlooked them. I'm used to seeing those kinds of, those kinds of drawings, like what would this look like? How might this impact our community? So I can't, I can't support this for a variety of reasons, even if I wanted to.
Councilmember Tanaka.
I want to ask staff a practical question. So, so what's the ramification of picking, you know, a slightly different range versus another? What impact does it have in terms of what we do as a city?
You know, I think what we're trying to do in the final EIR is give the public a good description of where the council thinks the policy decisions they've made are going to end up at the end of the day. So if we continue on the path that we started on January 30th with the council direction on housing policies and policies related to moderating the pace of growth, this is where we think about we're going to end up at the end of the day. And it helps us in the final EIR demonstrate that the comp plan we've adopted falls within the range that we've analyzed.
I guess my point is, I mean, is there going to be a change in our zoning code as a result? Or is there going to be, I mean, is this changing our caps?
This is only for the EIR purposes, and there's no precision here. We really are trying to give the public and ourselves a good description of where we think the policies will lead us.
Sure, that's kind of what I thought, right? It's kind of more of a reference number. It's not, there's no real, as I understand, any real, there's no teeth to it, so to speak. Is that true, or is there really teeth to this?
Well, I mean, I think the EIR isn't being done in isolation. It is designed to allow the council to have the flexibility to ultimately adopt a plan that will establish the numbers. Those numbers are still in many ways a target to the extent that there are zoning changes would be necessary to go ahead and implement them. And those are going to depend then even on subsequent actions that the council is going to take after you've adopted the comp plan. And let's be honest, we even have projects that come to us that have existing zoning that can take a long time to get through our process, so.
Sure. I think the mayor's approach, which was to have a range, actually makes sense, but I guess my question here is, you know, since this is the EIR study, you know, there's no real teeth to it, should we not just have an expanded range so that we have more things covered, right? What's the downside of having a more expanded range? So right now, I guess this amendment is moving it kind of uprange a bit, but what if we were to just have expanded range? So let's say go from, oh, can you scroll up a little bit, whatever that said? A, okay, yeah. So, so what if it was, what if it went from like scenario five, 35, 45 to 6,000? And what's, what's, what is that? What impact does that have if we do that, do expanded range versus a narrower range, slightly lower, or narrow range slightly higher? What would impact does that have in terms of what we're doing?
You could certainly do that. I mean, these scenarios taken as a whole represent quite a, quite a range. We're trying to give in the final EIR the community some improvement on the range that's represented by the six scenarios and trying to get a little finer, but there's no question that you, this is, this is, again, art more than science. You could modify the motion in any number of ways and still end up with a final EIR. I think that is, that we hope would be descriptive of where the council is going to end up on the policy matters.
Okay, because I do wonder if we would get buy-in, more buy-in here on the council if we had a more expanded range versus the range, the proposed range of the amendment? So, well, I first want to look into the maker and the secondor of the motion. Actually, no, the amendment now is with Cory, yeah. It's with you Cory.
So are you looking to make an amendment to the amendment?
Yeah, basically trying to expand the range.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
So that amendment, so that would change it from, so the low end would be scenario five, 35, 45. So it'd be somewhere between scenario five and scenario six. I would be comfortable with that, Adrian.
Correct, yeah. I mean, and maybe you'd get more buy-in that way.
I think that's a good strategy.
Yeah, I also wanted to mention, Mountain View is actually looking at somewhere between 18,000 and 22,000 housing units in a comparable time range.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yes, I guess I will weigh in on the amendment. First of all, I just want to say quickly, you know, the comp plan is really important, and I hope that tonight we can get away from five, four votes and find a way to get seven or nine even. I think what former Mayor Pat Burt said was, was a pretty good comment, that the comp plan has deliberate tensions. And so I think both of these motions and amendment are compromises, and I'm, am I thrilled with them? No. I'd like to see a lot less job growth, and, but I'm willing to consider it kind of to maintain balance, and so I appreciate the motions. I would say I would, I would consider, you know, this amendment, you know, if we included the job restrictions that were in scenario six, you know, but when we talk about scenario six, we only seem to be talking about the housing side. The original motion, I think, was an interesting compromise on both jobs and housing, but this amendment is kind of housing-centric, so. The other thing I'd say is, I don't think an expanded range helps, that's why we have six scenarios, which is pretty unusual. We've been working with a pretty wide range, and, and we're trying to get to a preferred scenario. I think we've been kind of delaying this decision for quite a while, and it's time that we do try to get more specific. It lets the public understand what the plan is and gives them an ability to react, so I don't think we should leave tonight with the full six range, the six scenarios.
All right, so we vote on the, you want to speak again?
Yeah, since I didn't speak after making the motion. So a couple of things. One, I do think it's important to point out that based on the specific recommendations that we made in January about policies, between four and six, was what staff said would fit, that that would fit with the policies we were identifying. So I think if we study, if we don't at least study up to scenario six or up to 6,000 units, then it raises questions about which policies, which of the pro-housing policies we supported in January are we going to want to cut? And as for Councilmember DuBois's indication, I would be very open to an amendment relating to the job numbers and any amendments relating to narrowing the range, but I'm open to friendly amendments.
All right, can we vote on the board? And that fails on a five to four vote with councilmembers DuBois, Koo, Scharf, Phil Seth, and Holman voting no. I think that's the first time I've been able to read it. So now we come back to the main motion. Councilmember Holman.
I have an amendment in E.
Amendment where?
I'm sorry?
An amendment, you said, I have an amendment.
An amendment in E, with in E. So E on the board just talks about the, the direction that was given on the 30th, but we didn't have much discussion, and there's one of those that I think merits discussion.
So Councilmember Holman, I started this, and you're welcome if you want to try and do it, but what I said is, we're going to have a full discussion of all of those on May 1st, every one of those on, on E, and I think that's an easier time to do it.
So that's a clarification, so we're going to have a full discussion of each one of these items?
You can talk about any of those items on May 1st.
Okay.
And we can make motions and all of that, and we're going to have a council meeting, which we'll talk about stuff. And we may have two, depending on how much time we have.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's, that's good. And the one, just to give you everybody a heads up, it's the one I want to talk about is the hotel increase FAR. Again, what the impacts of that are from a variety of different angles. The other amendment I would like to offer is that the jobs go, this is C, the jobs go in a range between 88, 68, from scenarios five and six, to the scenario two, which is the 98, 50. I'd like to offer that as a, as an amendment.
Seeing no.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Walbach.
Surprising. Oh, Cory, I'm sorry. I thought no one had seconded it, that's why I said surprising. Thank you for that.
Okay, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think, you know, the, and Councilmember Fine said it too, it's like, you know, if we increase the jobs, we're increasing the demand for housing. So we're kind of, you know, we're kind of dipping our toe in one place and sticking our thumb in the dike the other place. So I don't think it makes too much sense to be increasing jobs to a great extent when we're still trying to address the jobs-housing imbalance. So that's why I offered it as, as an amendment, and I think those are reasonable ranges. It's still a lot, I mean, 2.4 million to 3 million square feet of office development, non-residential development, that's a lot. And if you take that into, into consideration and in concert with the Stanford GUP development that's being proposed, and the Stanford GUP development that hasn't yet been built from the 2000 GUP, it is a huge amount of development. And so that's why I offered it as an amendment and appreciate the second.
Councilmember Walbach.
So if we're not willing to go higher on at least studying housing, I think it's imperative that we at least study going lower on the jobs. The jobs-housing imbalance is the central crisis in Palo Alto, right? It's not just about housing. As much as I do talk about housing, it is housing in a context, and that context is supply and demand. And if we're not willing to explore higher supply, we have to be willing to at least explore, you know, lower demand. And, you know, the lower jobs number was actually part of scenario six, which was what I was behind a year ago. And I appreciate Councilmember Holman offering this amendment. As I indicated when we were talking about my earlier amendment, as I indicated, Councilmember DuBois, I'd be very happy to explore amendments relating to the jobs, so I think that this is important. You know, as a couple members of the public, you know, Hamilton Hitchens, for instance, pointed out, you know, when you add jobs to the community, you create more demand for housing. And unless we are willing to be honest and talk about, you know, what drives the housing demand, we're never going to get ahead of the problem.
So I'm going to speak against this amendment. First of all, I think we've heard from staff on several occasions and from their consultant that anything less than 9,850 jobs is completely unrealistic and puts the EIR at risk and makes no sense. We lowered the number of jobs to 11,500 to be balanced and reasonable. We've also heard from our consultant that we have already 2,500 of those jobs already approved at the hospital. We're also had some job growth between, this is 15 years, we're already two or three years into this, we already have some job growth on that. We've also talked about how employment densities and that kind of stuff are really difficult, and it's cyclical. And so I would say it's just, you know, it's sort of like the parking discussion. We want people out of their cars, we want more parking, you can't just wish it into existence. And I think that what we want to do is be balanced, we want to be balanced on the housing, and I think we want to be balanced on the jobs. And I think this is not realistic. And, you know, I also think that if you start thinking about the jobs-housing imbalance, as many people, including Councilmember Walbach, has said, we're not an island. And what you're really looking at is you're looking at huge housing numbers on either side of us, in Sunnyvale, Mountain View, and in Menlo Park. You're looking at Redwood City putting in a large number of housing units. And what really matters frankly is the transportation, and a lot of these are along the Caltrain Corridor, which is good, which will serve Palo Alto. Those housing units will be excellent in helping us that way. A lot of them in the North Bay Shore will help with commute patterns in the Research, in the North Bay Shore Park with Google, LinkedIn, and some of the other big employers that are down there. So I think that we need to be very realistic, and what, there's two things I'd like to achieve tonight. One is I'd like to signal to the community where we are, and the other part is I'd like a defensible EIR that withstands legal scrutiny. And I think these low job numbers don't do that. And so I think it's really important that we have the right job numbers, realistic job numbers. And if you look at the job numbers for business as usual, they approach 16,000. So by going down to 11,500, we're being realistic and honest with the community about where the range is, which is 9,850 to 11,500, which is how I chose those numbers. So I would ask that you do not support this amendment.
Let's see, who still needs to speak? Councilmember Phil Seth.
I guess I wanted to ask staff if they can color a little bit on what would be involved in us actually getting to 9,000 jobs here. This is an EIR, right? It's not a target that we're setting, right? I, I am sensitive to the idea that there's no point in us spending a lot of time on staff. I am sensitive to the idea that there's no point in us spending a lot of time on studying circumstances that aren't achievable, right? So, I guess I'd like to hear from staff about that one. I mean, what would it take for us to get to 88-68 jobs? Is it even possible?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, we've been giving a lot of thought to what are the policy levers that the council would have to try and really diminish the rate of job growth. The office annual limit is one of those, and we've talked about perpetuating that in the future, although the council was not interested in making that citywide. That was one of the conversations we had on January 30th. We've also talked about this issue of starting to require a use permit for new office R&amp;D uses to regulate employment densities, and there hasn't been a lot of interest. You heard from the Stanford Research Park representative today that there's some concerns about that and its impact on the business community. So, there aren't a lot of levers there, and as I indicated earlier, job growth happens in existing space. So, the way we've thought about this 8,868, if 2,500 happens at the research park, I'm sorry, at the medical center, that means there are 5,300 jobs for the rest of the community in 15 years, which is about 350 jobs a year. It just doesn't seem that realistic. I mean, 9,000 doesn't seem particularly realistic, but it, 8,800 just seems low. I'm not saying it's impossible for you to move forward with that number, but in our opinion, it just seems that someone looking at our conclusion would say, gosh, how in the heck did you ever get that number?
And so, if I understand the corollary to what you just said, right, it's that, yeah, it's pretty likely that no matter what we do, we're going to end up sort of in, you know, at least 10,000, maybe 11,000, no matter what we do, it's pretty likely.
You know what? I think that's our feeling based on just the amount of building space we have here in Palo Alto.
So, I think the EIR should cover the range of possibility, right? I guess I wouldn't be averse to, I mean, if we say that, you know, so, I think 9,000 to 10,000 for the EIR is, we might not get our money's worth out of the EIR.
Okay. Councilmember DuBois.
So, I have to say, Corey, this is a tempting amendment, and I'm really listening hard to the arguments being made tonight. I'm not sure we all fully understand the ramifications of what we passed on January 30th. I think that what we passed on January 30th would actually degrade the housing situation. It's that combination of removing all the caps and increasing the jobs with some housing growth, but not enough to keep up with that job growth. And, you know, I don't think, I don't think people that benefit from that situation, I don't think the residents benefit. I don't think people looking for new housing benefit. I think the demand for that housing is going to be extremely high. On the other hand, you know, this question of what's a reasonable number, I think we need to think about that. So, the biggest thing for me, though, is where there's talk in here about policies to encourage housing downtown, to allow commercial space to be turned into residential space. So, I would offer a friendly amendment that, rather than change the job numbers, that we reconsider the introduction of the downtown cap. So, we would be left with these more middle-ground job numbers, but I think we would create an environment where we might actually get more housing. And I'll just throw that out there to see if there's interest in that.
What was the amendment?
Karen's what?
She's the maker of the motion.
Karen's the maker of the motion, okay.
I'm not replacing Part C. I guess I'm keeping Part C, the original amendment, but to reintroduce some form of the downtown cap to be defined by staff.
I'll second, but it's for discussion because I need some clarification.
So, I don't think this is agendized. I mean, maybe, I mean, is this the time to do this?
Molly probably can weigh in there.
I mean, to discuss.
You know, certainly at our May 1st discussion, we were planning to bring back the land-use element reflecting the council's input on January 30th, and that would be a good opportunity to reconsider anything that you feel like went too far in one direction or the other.
I certainly think C is driven by which policies are in place, right? The job number.
Sure, go ahead. Okay, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, so, the question is about the substitute motion is, or substitute amendment, is that the staff report reminds us that scenario two, which the prior job numbers were based on, include a citywide annual limit. So, I presume that that would be included in what the original maker of the motion was intending for C. So, that's one question, and I have another question that's pertinent to both of these.
Thank you for that question. The reason that we, in our staff recommendation, suggested that we land between the job numbers in scenario two and three is that scenario two had a citywide annual limit and scenario three had an annual limit, kind of like the one we have now on an interim basis. And we took that as one of the few policy levers that have managed to affect the production of office space and employment, a new employment in new building space. And so, that was our suggestion, but it is really just a projection or a prediction of what will happen based on a whole set of policies. And I think Councilmember DuBois has pointed out, there are other policies that the council has already directed us to include, like the conversion of some development potential that's commercial to residential potential. And if you, as policymakers, think that that is going to have a much greater impact than we have, then it would justify the smaller numbers in your range. I hope that's clear.
So, on the amendment, yes, it is true. That's one place I was going to go to, because we did talk about and have not moved on it yet, but talk about converting some of the commercials floor area ratio to residential. That's another way we can curb office growth so we can make some advances on our jobs-housing That isn't exactly what the amendment, what the amendment says.
So, I just want to be clear. I don't know if my amendment was understood. So, I am supporting the original motion and suggesting we stay with those numbers, but that we maybe allow for actual housing development through the cap. Was that clear?
Were you supporting the original motion or the amendment?
My amendment, my amendment to the amendment was to replace the numbers with the idea of encouraging housing.
Right, so, it was an amendment to the amendment.
Oh, can I just ask a clar-
So, you said you're replacing the numbers, but you-
I don't think we can replace the numbers. We do need a range of numbers for the EIR.
Well, I'm saying keep the numbers from the original motion.
Okay, well, that's the clarification there. Can I just make a kind of, I mean, I certainly understand the intention, separate from any concern Molly might have about, you know, is this relevant now? This, going back to the idea that the EIR is to establish a range for you to study, you're going to have to, on May 1st or after that, make a number of other policy decisions to start to develop, put more substance to your strategy. I mean, my own guess is, we can't, we're not going to effectively be able to meet the housing numbers that are in this range without looking at zoning changes that could include exactly what you're talking about, saying, let's look, how do we incentivize conversion of office to, but why not study the larger office number anyway than making this decision right now? I mean, I know you're going to make 10 other decisions between now and when you adopt the comp plan that are going to get more specific and tell the public, give the public a clear picture about how you're going to implement over the next 13 to 15 years, what it is you want to achieve. And this one's a little bit just sort of one-off. I understand what you're trying to do, and I'm just wondering if this is the time to do it rather than-
Yeah, I didn't think the amendment was within order, frankly. I thought it was outside of order, and that's why I asked the city attorney, and I got the sense that it's not. So, I mean, I'm not sure why we continue discussing.
The item is really framed as setting the parameters for the EIR. The programmatic changes that would go along with that in terms of what the comp plan elements might look like, I think, are, have not, the public has not been informed that those are an item for the council to focus on this evening. So, I think those are really better for the next time that the item comes back, although the two are obviously related, there's an interplay.
And I'll withdraw the motion, but just on pages, you know, Pecabitch 389 and 390, it lists a whole bunch of policies that drive all these numbers, right?
No. So, I'll withdraw the discussion. Okay, so, you withdraw the motion. All right. So, I guess we can vote on the, oh, wait, I got a lot, let me clear the lights. If anyone wants to talk that, who hasn't spoken on the amendment, put your light on. Councilmember Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm opposed to this amendment for a few reasons. One, I agree with the mayor that, you know, we need to be realistic about our jobs numbers as informed by staff and make this legally defensible. But I do disagree with the mayor that we can rely on other cities for our housing needs. That's another comment. Second, I'm a little worried, after seeing this amendment, that we're aiming for zero in a funny way. You know, we can solve our jobs-housing imbalance by saying zero jobs, and why don't we? Right? And that's not on the table right now, but if we ratchet all these things back, I actually feel that's really diminishing Palo Alto, actually. We do need to lead on some of these things, somewhat on jobs and how we do it in the right way, somewhat on how we regulate them, somewhat on how we measure employees per square foot, things like that. I'd like to see us lead on housing. It doesn't seem like the original amendment does that, or the original motion, but this amendment, to me, is kind of a ratcheting back in terms of our ambition and what we believe we're capable of, so I won't support the amendment.
Okay. Let's vote on the board. And the amendment fails on a six to three vote with Councilmembers Koo, Walbach, and Holman voting yes. Okay. Are we now ready to vote on the main motion?
Let's do it.
Hey, give me a nice welcome back present.
Oh, if you want to talk more, we can talk more. So, I do actually see three lights now on the main motion, so.
We're supposed to all talk, right?
Four votes, four, so, Councilmember Fine.
Sure. So, I'm going to test something out here. I'd like to make an amendment that the estimated employment growth be between scenario two of 9,800 and scenario four, which is 15,480. I'm testing you all, I want to see.
So, if you went to like the 12,000 number, you might get some support, not necessarily by me, but I'm just, so the 15,000, all right? So, do we have a second for that? Councilmember Tanaka.
Okay.
I want to speak to this for a moment. I know this is a little ridiculous and out there, but as we've all said, jobs drive our housing. And if this is one way to get housing, I'm actually willing to accept it. I'm not joking, guys. Like, I think we're being really, really poor on the housing front here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So, I spoke this for a second for a different reason. So, back to what our city manager was saying just a few minutes ago, which is, okay, so business as usual, hit 15,000. This EIR is not a mandate of what we're going to do. It's an analysis of what could happen and what the impacts are. And so, even to what Councilman Folsa said earlier, which is like, well, if you have such a tight range, does this really let us know what's going to happen? So, the EIR is not a mandate saying it's going to be this or that, it's analysis, right? And so, why would we not want a more broad analysis to let us know what's possible?
Okay. Seeing no other lights on, you want to speak to this amendment? Is it really necessary? We could just vote and turn it down.
Let's just vote.
I mean, you're not going to vote for it, I know that.
Yeah, just vote.
And that fails on a seven to two motion with Tanaka and Fine voting yes.
See how many two-seven votes you can get in a row.
All right.
I do want to speak to the main.
Yes, all right. Put your lights back on for the main motion, Vice Mayor Ness.
So, I think it's always important to explain that since earlier we voted for a 6,000 number, we're now back to a smaller number than we were, but one that I still think is rational. But I know there are people in our community, although I must say, the lack of audience tonight is really interesting. We had more people here for RPP and ADU. So, isn't that interesting that the comp plan doesn't have quite the lightning effect that some of the others do? So, it must be this is much more amorphous than something that's much more tangible, like where you're going to park or put a dwelling in your backyard. That's very interesting to me. I think there was huge support for going with the 6,000 number. It didn't work. I think politics always is the art of compromise, and I think tonight we're talking about a compromise. But I think what we need to do is move on with this. We're going to have two more long meetings, I think, that deal with both D and E, and I certainly look forward to those when I'm not quite as jet-wagged as I am tonight. And I think the motion that is in front of us is a reasonable, as I said, a reasonable compromise. And I think it begins to take us where we want to go with this comp plan, which has now been in process for 10 years, since before you came and most of us were sitting here. So, with that, I'm voting for the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Koo.
So, since we're talking about, you know, the EIR and looking at the numbers, may I make an amendment or a friendly one for number A, for scenario, instead of scenario five, to go to scenario two, using those numbers?
So, I was really informed that it makes absolutely no difference if I say scenario five or scenario two. I chose scenario five because that's-
Scenario two's the 2720.
Oh, scenario two's the 2720. Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay, got it. You can make the motion. Maybe we can get a six-three vote, I don't know.
Okay. Estimated housing to be-
So, you want the 27-
Yeah, I want scenarios two, 2720 dwelling units.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Seeing no second? All right. Did you have something further you wanted to say? I don't want to cut you off.
No, thank you.
All right. Councilmember DuBois.
So, a quick question. So, on B, did you just intend for that to be what the staff recommended?
Yes.
There's no change there?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, first of all, I'll say it again, I think, I want to thank the makers of the motion. I think this was a compromise, it's a balance, and I do appreciate it. And I think if we're going to work well the rest of the year, I hope we can do this more often. I do want to come back just to the school thing real quick. There were some comments made. We did get three letters today, and we got a lot of emails today. There was one from Todd Collins, there were actually two from the school district, Liz, just so you know.
I did finally get Todd's, but I didn't say, I still don't have the other one.
So, there was one from the school district to Stanford saying that they needed land for one more school for the Stanford GUP, and then there was a letter from the superintendent asking for more time to weigh in on the EIR itself. So, we had talked in city school, some reason there is a disconnect there, and I do hope in the next, before the end of the month, that we can connect with the right people. people, the school district. So, I just want to make sure that is clear. I do want, there was, I'm going to ask for a friendly amendment. If it's not friendly, we can take it up in May. But there were scenarios that included the County Expressway Plan. And the reason I bring that up is, again, we do, this compromise scenario is a fair amount of growth, and I'm concerned that the transportation element, I would like staff to be able to analyze that when they come back in May.
So, I completely support that, and I sit on the Expressway 2040 Committee. So, I wasn't, I assume that, do we need to put that in the motion, or are you analyzing it anyway?
Yeah, it's in some of the scenarios, and just to clarify, in the part D about transportation investment, we just listed things that we were going to fund in our jurisdiction, but we are assuming the transportation expressway elements that are funded in Measure B would go forward, including the new lane on Page Mill Road with HOV provisions.
Well, you should do it with HOV or non-HOV provisions, because that's not decided.
That's right. Well, we analyzed it both ways, so we can have that discussion.
Okay, because it was listed specifically in other scenarios and wasn't in this report, so.
Understood, and I apologize for that. We were really focusing on these investments that the city would make in bringing this forward, but there are investments by other agencies that would affect us, and we can outline those.
So, really, you don't need to amend. We assume that D covers that, and we're just clarifying that we would bring that back.
So, on May 1st, you'll be prepared to talk about it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Holman.
I almost forgot what I was going to bring up.
Don't feel obligated.
No, one is, and I've brought this up before, but I think I'm not the only one that's still a little confused and concerned about, you know, the picking and choosing from one scenario to another. So, when this comes back, I'm not offering an amendment, so when this comes back, can staff please offer a really clear explanation of like how it is that you can pick and choose from one scenario and plunk it into another scenario and it all, you know, still make good pudding? And there was a second one, but I have seen, oh, I know what it was. The other one was if staff also, when this comes back, could respond to, assuming the comment was correct, the comment that Jeff Lewinsky made, which was, as I took my notes, I'd see if it was correct, but that in a letter to MTC or A-BAG by the city, that 286 units were unachievable due to impacts on neighborhoods. So, if the city could respond to that question also when we come back and see like, if 286 were unachievable, how is it that we're looking at?
Councilmember Holman, if it's okay, I think we'd like to respond to that in the final EIR. I think it was offered as a comment on the draft EIR, and it would be appropriate to put that response in the final EIR. Just briefly, you know, I know the city over the years has done a lot of advocacy at A-BAG about its RENA numbers. I'm confident that that was the context in which that letter was drafted. We can confirm that. I think this is a different exercise. We're not looking at a seven or eight-year RENA period. We're looking at a 15-year or longer comprehensive plan, and the council's policy direction has been to encourage housing. So, I think, I think that, you know, it's kind of a new approach going beyond what that letter must have been about.
So, I appreciate that it was intended as a comment on the DEIR. At the same time, I'm not quite sure how, if it's going to have, presuming this comment was correct, that if 2,086 units is going to have a significant impact on neighborhoods, why does it matter if it's over a period of seven years or 30 years? If we can't add that number of housing units into the city without having a significant impact, I guess-
Well, again, Councilmember Holman-
That's what I would like to have a better understanding of when this comes back.
We've analyzed scenarios with a higher number of housing units in it, and we have not found, as you say, quote, "impacts on the neighborhood." We have identified some traffic and air quality impacts that can't be mitigated, and we've identified a host of impacts that require mitigation, and our intention is to apply that mitigation through this process. So, you know, I think, I think there is a response. I'd like to take the opportunity to prepare a thoughtful, written response in the final EIR to that sentiment.
So, when I chose Scenario 5 or Scenario 4 or Scenario 2, and I think, this is my understanding of it, that's not saying, when you have in the packet back here, you have little Xs next to the boxes, that's not choosing those boxes over other boxes. And I just wanted to clarify for everyone that we're not, that you're making those decisions. When I say Scenario 2, we're talking about the number, and it's really just to point out that it's the number, that we're not then saying it's the Scenario 2 boxes over, say, if I chose Scenario 4's boxes. I just wanted everyone to recognize that, so they know what we're doing. So, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Fine. Nope, all right. Are we ready to vote?
I voted five minutes ago.
And that passes on an eight to one vote, with Councilmember Walbach voting no. Thank you. So, now, I believe we're at Councilmember Comments. Oh, I actually, yeah, Councilmember Comments and Questions and Announcements. And we also do have Intergovernmental Legislative Affairs. We don't have anything under it, but I'm going to speak to it in my Councilmember comments. I was, I'm on the legislative, you know, reviews all the legislation for A-BAG, and there's a number of housing bills that are in the legislature right now, and a number of other bills that I would say threaten local control. And I think that we, as a council, should agendize some of these soon and be able to weigh in. And then, so, I just wanted to say that, that I thought that that was something that's important, because I know we often defend local control, and we should definitely look at those issues.
Can you work with me at agenda planning?
I will. I think some of you'd sort of be shocked at some of the bills that are out there, frankly. And in fact, I believe that A-BAG, at the end of the day, will also take a stand against some of the more extreme loss-of-local-control bills that are out there right now. There's something like 20 different housing bills out there. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I wanted to thank Rob DeGuse and Peter Jensen, as well as Police Officer James Refensschneider, is that how you say his name? They came out for the Barron Park Annual Meeting. They talked a lot about community services and policing activity. There was a lot of Q and A, so it was really appreciated.
Okay. Councilmember Ness.
So, I want to just briefly report on being in Washington last week. I would encourage any of you to go. We were very fortunate, I think, and had a very long meeting with the FAA, which we have, we passed that information on to staff. There's still a great deal of interest in whether or not there will be another select committee that's made. We discovered that almost every office was willing to see us. Sadly, it snowed on Tuesday, and so, the usual representatives that we could have met with on Wednesday couldn't get in on Tuesday. It's a great opportunity to interact with people from all over the country. We spent some more time with the people from Boulder, not surprising, because Boulder is not dissimilar from Palo Alto. And once again, as I said, I found what was so discouraging was this, such a negative feeling toward California. I don't have any answers to it, but it also became very clear that the split in California between the parties is very significant when it comes to funding. So, there was a lot of talk about that. We ended up sort of accidentally at an MTC meeting and heard a great deal about, yes, I know, you know, it's amazing what happens. There wasn't, there wasn't a moment that we weren't busy with something or learning something or attempting to get more information from those who are back there. So, I'm delighted I went. I hope that others will think of going to some of the other meetings. This was the National League of Cities, and it's their spring legislative meeting, where they are discussing what is going to be coming in the next year. There was clearly a lot of talk about the president, not surprisingly, and where is this administration going and what else is going to change? That was interesting. So, delighted I went, and as I said, would encourage others to go. And we missed you going, by the way.
Councilmember Walbach.
Couple things. First, also, was part of that trip to Washington, DC. I thought it was interesting, just, you know, an interesting lesson, and one of the reasons why I would join Vice Mayor Ness in encouraging everybody to go next time. In our meeting with the FAA, it wasn't until about an hour into what I was expecting to be a half-hour meeting, that through our pressuring and making, you know, asking questions, we got, we were able to pull more information out of them, which made us cautiously optimistic, but emphasis on the cautiously, when it comes to airport noise. But, you know, just having us in the room with those people, asking the right questions, got us more information than we would have otherwise had. And it was just an interesting lesson, right? You know, hopefully, we get some Caltrain electrification. Hopefully, we get some relief on airplane noise. Hopefully, we get the approvals we need to move forward with the creek, flood protections upstream from Highway 101. Emphasis on hopefully. Also, today, I was appointed as Chair of the Legislative Action Committee for the League of California Cities Peninsula Division, which is a new committee.
Congratulations. Councilmember Fine. Oh, I thought you had your light on. So, I guess I'll just also briefly report out on Washington, DC. I thought it was extremely useful, and I found what was the most useful, frankly, was talking to the Republican senators that we talked to.
Yes.
And what I would report back is, they, too, were very concerned with the cut in transportation, the ones we spoke to, that this is sort of a change in the process. I think there was lots of concerns about where that budget was going. It hadn't come out yet, but there'd been rumors, and I thought that was very interesting. I'm still hopeful that the feds will step up and do the right thing and fund the Caltrain electrification. And if not, I'm sure that there'll be some sort of a Plan B that electrification actually gets done at some point.
Could I just add to that, that while we were back there, there's so much interest in electrification, and I don't know if any of you noticed that just a week ago, there was an editorial in the New York Times on the electrification and the importance of it in the country. So, it was heartening to read that. And if any of you have any influence with someone, please use it.